Well, I kept looking up and saying it's time, but that one's not. Okay, good morning, everybody. We're gonna go ahead. Thank you. We'll go ahead and start the meeting, and if we could stand and salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to note that all commissioners are present and ready to roll this morning. Are there going to be any agenda changes?
No, the only thing we might want to consider is, we've had a request for continuance on item number six. And if, you might want to just take that request for continuance first thing, just so persons have to hang around for five other items if it's your desire to continue it. So if you want to move that up to the front. But then if it's a desire of the commission not to continue, what I would say is to keep it in its normal order.
Okay. You okay with that? Mr. Stoughton? We'd like to move number six up, just to see if we're gonna continue their hearing, so they don't have to stay here all day. If we don't continue, we won't have their hearing. We'll go directly to you. Okay, thank you for that. Are you all okay with doing that?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Okay.
But that would be under the public hearings section, so we've got to do the comment period and then consent first.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and go to public comment now. If there's anybody that would like to say anything that is not on the agenda, now would be your time.
Cookies are not on the agenda. As you know, kindness is my stock in trade. I come before people with an open mind, an open heart, an open hand. And sometimes I come with something in that hand. And today I come with cookies. I bake these myself, and I hope you enjoy them.
Thank you.
Chocolate chip.
Thank you.
Now we're done.
So, that is all I think I have today. I better give these guys a little.
Is there any other public comment this morning? Okay, on Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors had done an announcement, and we're also gonna make the same announcement. Nobody is allowed to come before the podium in this area, whether it's during break or otherwise, because of the wires that are running across the floor. So, if we go to break, let the commissioners come out, and you can talk to them. Please don't come before the podium. If you need to hand over any paperwork, we'll make sure we get it to Annette. But otherwise, we'd like you to stay behind the podium, and we thank you for your cooperation on that. And if there's no further public comment, we will go to the consent agenda for the approval of minutes from the April 13th, 2017 meeting. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes?
No.
No? Everything looks good? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve of the minutes for April 13th? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Okay. Now, we will go to the public hearing for, to discuss a continuance for item number six, which is two zero one six five six one.
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission. My name is Patrick Goggan. I represent Ray Moore regarding this appeal. I was just contacted a couple weeks ago regarding this matter while I was out of town on vacation with my son for spring break. And I was only retained on this matter within the past week. So, I have respectfully requested a continuance on this matter. It's somewhat convoluted. I'd like the opportunity to further investigate, interview relevant witnesses, and have the opportunity to come back to the commission, I believe it's May 25th.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any issues with giving a continuance to this hearing?
Not for me.
Okay, and is May 25th current date?
That would be the right date, yes.
Okay. So, if that's the case, can we get a motion to continue to date certain of May 25th?
Do you want public comment first?
I probably should do public comment. Thank you. Where's my coffee? Does anybody have any public comment they would like to make on this?
Good morning to everyone. My name is Michael Petkovich. This is my wife, Romina Filiponi. We're here today to comment on the case with Ray Moore. There's just so much to say. I don't know, you know, the timing here or anything. But we came from Florida to stand by what we want to say. And if May 25th is the day that you choose, we'll come back and we'll give our side of the story.
The reason that we are here is because we are basically the ones that we started everything, this business. We were together, working as a partnership, that didn't go well. We are the investors in the project. We're the ones that created. We are the ones that helped them come to this place. And they're trying to take everything from us. And we're here just to be a part of it.
Okay, so right now, we're not having the hearing on the case. We're just talking about the continuance. So, I guess the question would be to you is, do you want to speak against doing a continuance, or go ahead and allow it to continue?
We'll rather do it today, because we're here. We flew, we paid for the tickets, the stays. But we'll come every time that we have to, if it's necessary, obviously. We'll rather do it today.
We have everything that, if you need to see any type of evidence, receipts, text messages, emails, operating agreements, whatever you need, we have it right here. So, if this is relevant to you all, now, later?
Okay. I think we're gonna have to wait to go through any of that, but my question to you would be, are you registered as one of the appellants?
We're not on the registration, on the actual application.
Okay, so the only time period that you will be able to speak during this hearing is during public comment, and that time period is limited to five minutes. Just want to make sure that you understand that.
Okay, sure.
Okay, okay. Does any commissioners have any further questions?
No.
You are residents of Florida, correct? You flew all the way down here for this?
That's right.
Thank you.
So, we could, really it's your choice. Options would be to continue it, require these folks to come back at a subsequent hearing. We could have the hearing today, but the appellant is not here, other than his representative, who's just, you know, recently taken the case. You could take their public testimony and then continue the item, if you felt that. But they wouldn't be here later on if there were further questions that came up. So, I'm not sure how to advise you on this. I guess it's up to you as to what you would like to do, and how you could do this, and try to accommodate everyone's needs as best as possible.
Okay.
I would like to hear Mr. Goggan's views on the commission taking their information now, and then continuing the rest of the hearing to May 25th.
Well, I think one other question would be, do you folks want to testify today and not return on the 25th?
Yes, that would be best. Otherwise, we can have our attorney come next time. But it would be efficient for everyone to take advantage of the opportunity while we're here, with, you know, all of the supporting documents, and take advantage of this time.
I'm not sure, but I would assume that if you testified today, you would not be given another five minutes next time? If you changed your mind and came back?
That would, today would be their opportunity to testify. And you're right, that the one opportunity to testify is a member of the public. Any of the documentation that was provided, you know, could be made part of the public record. Then we could then review that more thoroughly, so that, as long as they're aware that if you testify today, that would be your opportunity to testify.
I would have concerns about you testifying today. This is totally up to you. But if any evidence was brought forward on the actual time that we hold the hearing, and you weren't able to be here for that, you would be testifying just for right now. You wouldn't have an opportunity to testify for your public comment period during any rebuttal that you would want to give. So, you could, you can actually give us your five minutes today if you would like, but that would be your five minutes. And I don't know if we're having the hearing yet, because we have not voted, so.
Sorry, we're also, this is new to us, so I guess we'll go accordingly. If you think it's best for us to give our five minutes now, then great, we'll do it. If you think it's better, you know, at another time, I think it's, we would like to do it today.
Why don't you two discuss it for one moment, and then we'll take public comment behind you? Thank you.
We don't have an issue with you taking testimony today. I would just, we would just like to have an opportunity to have that recorded, and have that for the purposes of the hearing when it's held. I would just also, I would proffer that these individuals are conducting business here. I had to travel several hours just to request a continuance. Very respectful of everybody's time here, including the witnesses, actually, Mr. Moore is here. But whatever the commission would like to do, we just request a little more time to prepare, as we do believe that there's good cause. I've been only recently retained, so, but we're amenable to however the commission would like to proceed.
Thank you. Okay, is there any further public comment? I think what I'd like to do is bring it back and have discussion amongst the commissioners as to how you feel about giving a continuance at this point.
When did he apply for a continuance?
I'm sorry, Karen, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to look real quick and find out when he actually applied for the.
We received a letter earlier this week requesting it.
For the appeal, not the continuance.
Oh, the appeal itself?
Yes, that's what I was looking for.
I don't think the attorney did.
I know Mr. Moore did.
March 20th.
Could I add something?
I was contacted about two weeks ago. I was on vacation. And I didn't have an opportunity to be able to speak with Mr. Moore until I returned sometime last week. We were able to talk, so I wouldn't, and I believe he was actually talking to other attorneys, and I was a subsequent attorney. So, it wasn't as if Mr. Moore was derelict in any way in trying to find representation.
Do I understand correctly that the planning department does not object to this requested continuance?
We do not.
Okay, well, my view is that we should hear from the Petroviches today to accommodate them and continue the matter to May 25th, otherwise, my view.
A question I would have is, they mentioned that they were gonna have an attorney here next time, if I understand correctly. And I don't know that the attorney would have a chance to say anything.
He wouldn't if they used their five minutes today. I have very big concerns about them using their five minutes here today. If we decide to do a continuance, I don't think their rebuttal would be fair during public comment.
I agree. I don't think we should hear from them today.
I think it's up to them.
I agree. It is completely up to them.
And I'm not going, you know, I won't stand in their way if you want to have your five minutes today. If you feel as if you understand the issues that are going to be presented, and you're ready to rebut the positions that the, that Mr. Moore will be making, or his attorney will be making, if you're comfortable going ahead and having your five minutes today, and not coming back the next time, but it appears clear that even if you have an attorney here next time, once you use your five minutes, that's it. Your attorney wouldn't have a chance.
I believe.
The attorney could respond to any questions the commission might have.
Okay. No, I believe that, well, we came here ready to answer and to explain our case. It's our case for us. And, but I think that it will be fair, that if it gets postponed, just to postpone it until it happens again, we'll come back. The lawyer will come back, and we have all the proof now. We're ready. We've been ready. There's nothing to be prepared for us, but I guess it is for them, so we'll wait. We'll wait.
I'm sorry. Do we have five minutes each?
Our public comment, yes, you would. Yes, you would.
Good question.
That was a very good question.
And even, like, just showing the details, we have a big folder too. We already spoke with Paul that called us, and we sent all the information in for you guys to read, but we know that it's a long story.
Okay.
We want you to get a clear picture, and we want to be very transparent with everything. And it's important to share the details, so you can see the big picture.
Okay.
And see if we're transparent.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you guys sit down for just a minute, so the commissioners can make a decision on the continuance, and then we'll know which direction you're going in.
I'm just confused, as a member of the public, whether a continuance would be, you would be opening it today to a public comment on a continuance that's not even being opened? I'm not sure I understand how you would do that.
I'm gonna let Peter answer that, because he's the one that gave that suggestion.
So, so what, we would actually open the item. Right now, we're just discussing the continuance. If the commission decides to open the public hearing, allow anyone here to comment, and then continue the hearing to the May, or May 25th date, that would be the process we'd go through.
Okay, so if the commissioners would like, if somebody wants to make a motion to continue, or a motion not to continue and have the hearing today, that's where we're at.
Well, I will make a motion to continue it to the date in May, and encourage the Petroviches to come back and be ready to give your side of the story.
Is there a second for that motion? Okay. Any other comments?
I have one question. Is the planning, does the planning department have the materials that are in your binder now?
Some of it. We just, the operation.
If, if you have more that you want to share with the planning department, the planning department could accept more materials at this point?
Yes, please. If you have something you want to, you know, and any explanatory, you know, description of what the information is, that would be helpful for us.
And that.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to.
Mr. Grow would be the planning staff member you would speak with, yes.
Okay, I just, we need to go to the mic if we're gonna speak, because it has, needs to be on the record. But I think we got what we needed. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have one question. Is cultivation permitted on the property now? From now to May 25th?
I can answer that question. I don't know. We need to look into that through the hearing and see where we're at, so.
I want to make sure that anything further that is shared with the planning department is also shared with Mr. Goggan.
As of this moment, the license has been denied, correct? It's in appeal process, but it has been denied.
But the denial is, what is the, what is the current status of the?
Okay, so we're not here to discuss that right now. What we're discussing right now is the continuance. I have to stay on the agenda item. Those would be questions you would ask during the actual hearing that, so right now, the agenda item is continuance, and that's what we need to stick to in speaking with. And technically, I closed public comment, and we're back to the commissioners to make a decision. And I'm not trying to be rude, it's just we have to follow policy.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just advise him that you should talk, talk to the planning department, as far as to answer that question.
They would like you to come into the planning department and speak to them. Okay. All right, so back to, I have, what is going on here? Okay, I have a motion and a second to take the hearing on a continuance to a May 25th specific date. So, is, are you guys ready to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, okay, so we have two opposed and three yeses. The reason that I'm opposing is that because when the hearing is advertised, and we have people that are flying in from out of area, that plays heavy on me. So, okay, I think what, you'll go to the planning department, you've got your continuance, and we'll see you on May 25th. Thank you. Deep sigh. Are you ready? Okay, we're gonna move back to, and I did, I was supposed to make a second announcement today that I did not make. And I need to do this, because I should have done it the first time. I just want to go over the process of hearings. We've got a very stacked agenda today, and we're gonna follow the hearing procedures today. There's times when we get a little bit lenient and get out there, and we don't want to do that today with so many applications before us. So, I just want to make it clear that we'll have an opening of the hearing, presentation by staff, any presentation a correspondent. Then we'll have the applicant's presentation at 15 minutes. Public comment will be limited to five minutes. Then we will have a rebuttal by the applicant for 10 minutes total, rebuttal by stakeholders for 10 minutes total, and then we'll be closing the hearing. So, we're gonna really try to stay strict within our timeframes today for everybody. If we can do that, we would really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go to Gina. I believe you're handling this presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're ready.
So, first on the agenda, you have a request for an extension of time. Request was made by the Mark Pringle Company on behalf of the North Vista Plaza Project 2005-190. Project was originally approved by the Board of Supervisors, January 22nd, 2008. It was a 169 lot, residential lot subdivision. Back with the approval of the project, the Board of Supervisors allowed them three years to complete the conditions of approval prior to expiration. Subsequent to that, there were state, six automatic state extensions, or I should say, six years' worth of automatic state extensions that were granted to the project. The map finally was due to expire January 9th, 2017. The applicant landowner did make a timely filing for an extension request. They are requesting five years. However, staff is actually recommending a three-year extension. This is kind of a unique subdivision in a, in a situation that we haven't really come across yet. During this, this whole nine-year period of time, there was, there was an incident where, there was a disagreement, basically, with the, with the developer and the landowner that basically ended up in some mediation and litigation. The whole property was tied up for a number of years. The Mark Pringle Company finally obtained ownership over the land in 2016. At that point, he was able to legally move forward with anything that he needed to do, subject to the conditions of approval, was absolutely then his, so, so to speak. So, during the timeframe that he was able to actually work on the project, they did secure water and sewer. They have a will serve letter from CCWD. They have installed approximately 50% of the, of the infrastructure necessary to serve water and sewer to the project. In addition, even though it wasn't a condition of approval, they had a, they had to secure and establish drainage easement between them and the adjacent parcel. That was also part of the, the overall findings or recommendation from the judge after the mediation. And, and they are aggressively pursuing that. Everything is written up. They just basically overlook the fact that it didn't get recorded, but I do believe that that is underway. So, basically, given the whole entire situation and the uniqueness of their, of their situation, staff did make a finding that they have complied with that good faith effort, finding that we must make for subdivision extensions. And our recommendation is that you approve a three-year extension of time.
Thank you, Gina. Is there a representative here for North Vista Plaza? Okay, come on up, please.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Felicia Devias. I represent the Mark Pringle Company and Mark Pringle.
I'm gonna have you write your name on that piece of sheet of paper there for us, please. No pen? You don't have to fill it all out. We just need your name, if that's okay. Thank you.
And I would like to say Mark would like to be here. He's just, has had a lot of health issues since about October, so he wasn't able to come up.
Okay, and you are?
I'm his employee. I represent him. We work together.
Okay, and we have that on record?
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so it's basically what Gina said. We took final ownership of this, I think, last year, late last year. We also took ownership of two commercial properties that we've been concentrating on. Karen was one of our tenants for a while there. And we've been concentrating on those quite a bit. And in October, end of October last year, Mark went in the hospital. So, the reality of the situation is, we haven't had a lot of time to pursue the tentative map. And we would like to. We want to stay in the area for a while. We want to build these houses. The market hasn't been great. There will be a hospital going in there soon. I think that you guys know about that, which I think will boost the market quite a bit, and then it'll probably be the right time to build. The Norried family will also be developing some commercial properties close by there. So, we're excited to be here, and we'd like to do it. It's just not quite the right time, and that extension would be really helpful.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Would a, would a three-year extension be sufficient for you to do?
We will make a three-year extension work. We would like a five quite a bit.
The reason we're recommending three is that, you know, three is a normal timeframe for approval of a tentative map. The state law and our county code allows for up to six years total. So, if three years comes in, and, you know, they still haven't been able, they would be able to apply for an additional three years. So, I think it just, so if circumstances change, you know, one of the things we need to do when we look at these is, is it still appropriate? You know, are there changes in circumstances, changes in conditions that we would need to look at that might be applied to any extension? Extensions are discretionary, so we have the ability to update conditions. We'd also need to look at the environment around it, and if there are new environmental issues that might come up. So, that's why we recommend not granting, you know, full five or six years at one time, but, you know, doing incrementally. In many, many situations, other jurisdictions do it a year at a time. That seems a little excessive, given the situation here, but I think two to. That seems a little excessive, given the situation here, but I think two to three years would be a reasonable amount of time. And given the situation, we recommend three.
So, understand that it's not automatic that...
I understand that, yeah. Three years will be great, and we'll be able to make some progress in three years, certainly, and we'll be back here. That's not a problem for us.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
I have a question for the department. The infrastructure that's been done for the water supply, has that actually been done? Actually, it's a question for both of you. Was that done by CCWD or by the developer?
I believe that was... Those are developer requirements, so, yeah. So, the developer actually made the installation in accordance with CCWD and their requirements.
Anything further from you?
I have some questions when we get to the resolution.
Okay. All right. Okay, so I guess, is there any rebuttal, or you're good? Good. Okay, can we go to public comment now? Does anybody have any public comment they would like to state on this agenda item?
Good morning. Colleen Platt with myvalleysprings.com. We were very involved in this project in the past when it came before planning. In 2000... Actually, we started noticing in 2005, 2006, took pictures, watched the project. And then when it came forward in 2007 and '08, we participated in improvements to the project and making the project a better project, getting more open space, saving more trees, getting the affordable housing in there. So, we were fairly satisfied with the final product and the conditions that were put on the project. So, we support this extension time for the 36-month time period as long as it's with those conditions that were still, you know, attached to the project. And that was the original supervisor's approval was for 36 months, so I feel that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Any further public comment? Okay, then we're gonna close the hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
One of the things I want you to know is, when I worked for Pusser Insurance Agency, we rented one of the buildings that was originally the Norrieds. And so, I have talked to Felicia. I don't think we've ever spoke about this project. But I have talked to Floyd when this was his project, a lot about this project. That was four or five years ago. So, I just wanted to on the record that...
Thank you.
I've known about this.
Okay. Any other commissioner questions?
I have a couple of questions for staff.
Okay.
Did I hear correctly that there is a will-serv letter from CCWD for water?
Yeah, so we have... Oh, I have an email from CCWD. It's not a formal letter in the file, but I did make contact with Robert Kramer with CCWD, and he replied in an email correspondence verifying that they do, in fact, have a will-serv concept approval, and in addition that they have completed up to 50% of the infrastructure needed to serve both water and sewer. So, no formal letter, but I do have an email confirmation.
The draft resolution refers to the applicant consulted with the company to engineer design plans necessary to report the map. Are those the improvement plans, same thing that's referred to in the conditions?
Yes.
And your support for that finding in the Pito letter, is that correct? It's over half a million dollars they spent?
The Pito letter and the half a million dollars, specifically, we haven't been able to nail down exactly what all of that was for. It was evident in the journal that was supplied, provided to us as an attachment to that original request for extension, that the expenses were all incurred prior to approval of the map. So, we did not feel it necessary or to actually be able to use that as a finding, a good faith finding. So, didn't go through it and itemize and figure out what all that was for, but because of the date of entries that were in the journal, it was obvious to us that it was all pre-application expenses.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further questions?
Just a follow-up. That half a million dollars or so that was quoted by Mr. Pito, was that money expended by the Mark Pringle Company, the Norrieds?
The Norrieds.
Or both?
That, I'm uncertain as to where the monies were actually, who was spending the money. The journal entry, I didn't believe, really made that direct indication as to where it came from. It was just project-related. It was provided to me by the Pringle Company. I'm assuming it was money that they had expended, but if you have any specific question perhaps, maybe Felicia or even Scott can... They're all nodding their head yes.
Yes, as to...
Yes, as indicating that those were expenses that were incurred by the Mark Pringle Company.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay. If there's no further discussion...
I do have a couple of suggestions on the resolution.
Okay.
One is, I think, just a typo on the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th whereas clause. It begins, whereas a proposed project is located on real property, et cetera. And it goes on in the third line after 02, 03, and 09, are described... The R should be an "and," I'm fairly sure. And then on the evidence under finding number two, I think the record's clear and it's been confirmed today that they've put in about 50% of the necessary infrastructure for the water. And the way it reads, it appears that they've put it in at all. So, I think the second sentence should be clearer by saying approximately 50% of the necessary infrastructure which will serve the project has been installed. And on the third sentence, it says, an applicant has consulted with and accompanied to engineer design plans, et cetera. The N should be an "O." And that's my only suggestions.
Assuming that the department agrees that that's what that third sentence was supposed to mean, now makes sense.
Yes.
I do think that the evidence should... For the finding two, should include more details such as significant progress has been made... Or, excuse me, litigation has significantly delayed the meeting of the conditions of the map. Significant progress has been made after conclusion of that litigation, so that we get the reason why this amount of progress shows good faith. That, I think, is the language that...
Can you read that one more time, please?
Sure. The evidence under finding two would start with litigation has significantly delayed the meeting of the conditions of the map. Second sentence would be significant progress has been made after conclusion of that litigation.
Okay. I'm good with that, if the rest of you are?
I don't think it directly goes to the good faith efforts to meet the conditions, but it is explanatory, and I think helpful in that regard.
Well, I'm just... Yeah, I'm concerned that other applicants might say, oh, well, this is all we have to do over nine years in order to show good faith. These are special circumstances.
Okay, is there any further comments? All right, seeing then, is there a motion to uphold the planning departments?
I'd move to adopt the resolution as amended.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, I wasn't paying...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Platt? Hello? Are we good to go to the next hearing?
This is the one here. Yeah.
Go to the next hearing, or do you want to break? Go. Got it. Taking direction. Don't want to mess up. Okay, so going on to item number two, 2006-047, extension of time for Murphy's Oaks. And Gina, are you also presenting that one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Similar to the previous request, we have yet another request for extension of time for five years for besting tentative subdivision track map 2006-047 for the Murphy's Oak subdivision, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors on April 15th, 2008, for 46 residential lots. Much like the previous project, there was approval for three years with six automatic state extensions mapped to expire February 15th, 2017. The applicant landowner made a timely filing for extension. Thus far, meeting their good faith findings, they have pursued and been issued a streamlined alteration agreement as one of their conditions of approval. In addition, the Public Works Department has confirmed the submission of improvement plans for the project, which includes a grading plan, construction plans, engineering cost estimate, drainage plans, all for the subdivision, in addition to a detention con analysis and associated fees with all of that also. The final map itself has been submitted to the county surveyor for final map review. Mitigation measures, they were required to mitigate for the loss of oak trees. That mitigation measure has been met. They have made their appropriate payment to the Wildlife Conservation Board as recommended or required, I should say, in their conditions of approval. In addition, they also have a will-serv letter from the Murphy Sanitary District, as well as the Union Public Utility District for Water and Sewer, also providing evidence in the file from those two districts indicating that they do have a will-serv to serve the project with both water and sewer. This project has made significant progress in the time allowed, but they're not quite finished yet. They got a little bit of a delay with a LOMAR process that they had to go through regarding the grading plan. I don't believe that they have actually completed that yet. They've submitted all the necessary documents, and basically, it's in the hand of FEMA right now, and they're just waiting on that to be resolved before they can move forward. So, knowing that they were coming up against the... Quickly approaching their expiration, they had no other option at this point but to request an extension, and so that's where we are today. Much like the previous project, our recommendation is for a three-year extension.
Thank you. Is there a representative here?
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. Jack Houts with Murphy's Oaks. And just like Gina said, we've been working hard on this project. We ran into some problems with FEMA on a floodline boundary, which has actually been resolved now. So, we have a letter from FEMA...
Great.
Accepting our LOMAR, and we're just on a review period, like 60 days for that. But all the plans are at Public Works right now. We've been working with the planning and Public Works and getting the plans done. We would actually have been done last year, but, you know, FEMA issue delayed us. As far as the intersection, streets, bridge, all that, we've already paid for and actually already have done all those improvements. And we've obtained a will-serv from the water and sewer, so we're about as far as we can go right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does it... Well, hold on one second in case the commissioners have any questions. Are you all good?
I'm good.
Well, you did a good job. Okay. I'm sure you have nothing to rebut against what he said.
No, I just might want to add one additional thing. The will-serv letter from the Union Public Utility District regarding water had an incorrect expiration date on it, and the district did, in fact, make that correction. She noted it right away in an email reply to me. I just don't have a corrected version of that. I don't think it really matters for this purpose, but I do... I did provide you with an email from her indicating that she had recognized that error.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the public that has any comment on this project? No? He's just skating right through here. This is good. Okay. If there's no other public comment, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. No discussion?
Just one suggestion on the resolution.
Okay.
Very last part of the evidence under finding two, there's a typo. Last sentence, April 6th.
Did you say evidence on the... On two?
Correct.
Last sentence?
Very last line. April 6th. Other than that, looks good to me.
Okay, thank you. Well, then I guess we're ready to make a motion.
I'd move to adopt the resolution as amended or corrected or...
Is Gina gonna read the resolution?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item number three, 2006-129, extension of time approved for TPM for John and Maria Stotin. Gina, you representing this one as well?
Oh, that's me.
Ooh. All right, Scott, let's do it.
All right. As you said, this is an extension of time for 2006-129, TPM for John and Maria Stotin. This was originally approved on April 5th, 2008 by the Board of Supervisors. It was set to expire 36 months after that date. However, like the other extensions of time we've talked before, it qualified for six extensions through California state law, thus extending the expiration date to April 15th of this year. The applicant did make a timely filing request for the extension of time. The parcel map is to divide 46.8 acres into four parcels ranging from five and a half to just under 22 acres in size. The good faith effort that has submitted is the have had... Oh, that's why, that's right. So under further review of the statute, the good faith effort filing actually is only applicable to subdivision maps, not tentative parcel maps. So it's completely up to the discretion of the commission on whether or not to grant this extension. We feel they have made good faith in addition, even though it is technically not required, that they have been, they have contracted with the surveyor and have had some survey work done on the property. However, due to some lengthy property disputes with both the adjacent property owner and the county and other legal issues, they haven't been able to finish their survey. That has recently been resolved. Cleanup is nearing completion on that. And the applicant feels as though they will be able to finish the surveying soon and get this pushed up. Staff is recommending a one-year extension of time and for them to complete the surveying and run improvements necessary.
One question I would have is that even though it's not required by an ordinance, why your finding number one stating that a good faith effort, it's still something that would enter into our discretionary.
Right. It's still something to consider. They have been working on it.
Yeah.
Correct.
One question, will CCWD provide water?
This is. Would that indicate that CCWD would be. Yes. They will be.
Is there a will serve letter?
I do not have one in the record.
So Scott, you just said to extend for one year.
Yes.
Leading the resolution and why am I not seeing this?
If they hurry the calendar four years off, you go on. Yeah.
Okay, there it is. I'm sorry.
One year.
Everything was popping out to me except for that one year. Okay, thank you.
I hit it with parentheses.
Okay. Mr. Stoughton, are you here representing this project?
Mr. Wister. I don't know if you guys have yet, so.
Just for the record, do you have permission to represent?
Yes, I do and they have a record.
Thank you very much.
So thank you very much. To answer Mr. Wister's question, CCWD is currently serving that property and there are four hookups for it, along with Volcano Telephone. It services not only telephone, high-speed internet, cable television, and PG&E provides all electricity to each of those parcels. So, yeah, I've been working on it. What else we have, continuance for one year. This might take up to three years. As Scott said, the county is working diligently on this. Evidently, they've been working diligently on this for about ten years now. And finally, we have a warrant for them to clean up the neighboring property so we can finish that survey. The county put vagrants, put people that do not belong on the property on that property. There's a, next to us, there's actually no owner of that property. It's the person that died eight years previous to the county giving permission for squatters to live there. And that's been our problem is removing the squatters and all their garbage and making it safe up in that corner piece of property. PG&E approached me yesterday asking, they're very scared about going up there to disconnect the electricity to that neighboring property. And they, they were quite scared, let me just put it that way. Hopefully code compliance within the next week or two, but who knows with code compliance and what they'll do. The ranchery is also involved in this, in this process and they might come to the rescue and convince county council's office that they have a plan. County's council's office has also been negligent in this, in this matter. And I didn't mean to bring this up, but.
Yeah, can we get back on the agenda, please? We have a project here to discuss. You're done?
Yeah, so we've gone three years, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, any rebuttals? Is there any comment from the public on this project, please? Then, okay, we will bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
I have a question for Scott and that is, is this, why is it necessary to restrict us to one year? It does sound as if there's been a lot of thorny issues tossed around.
We just thought that the conditions aren't too onerous and that one year may be sufficient, but it is up to your discretion if you wish to grant more than that. Things staff.
You wouldn't feel the county's prejudiced if we said for two years?
No, that'd be fine.
Did you say two or three?
I said two. Splitting it.
So when we were discussing this earlier, they, he has the ability to come back again for more extensions. And what is the max amount of time he can extend?
Six.
Six years and he can get two, three-year extensions?
Any combination that equals six. Could be six one-year extensions, it could be one six-year extension, it could be any combination thereof.
So, Mr. Stoughton, when we have a recommendation to potentially look at two years, do you feel that it's beneficial to you to come back more often to make sure progress is happening? Or do you feel good about the two years?
I would love for it to be only one year, but saying as this has gone on for a very long time, two years would be appropriate so I don't spend eleven hundred dollars every year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further comments from the commissioners?
Sounds to me like two years would be appropriate.
I agree.
I agree with the two.
Okay. You agree too? Good job.
I do too.
All right, then. Can I get a motion to accept the resolution as amended to a two-year term?
I so move.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend that we just take a really short break right now before we start in on the appeals. They can be a little bit lengthy, so let's take our break now and then we'll be able to break on schedule for lunch. We'll be back at ten oh five. And we're going to reconvene and start with number four, two zero one six four nine nine. And I'm assuming Mr. Grow is going to do the presentation on this one?
Yes, that's correct. And I need to get, that's correct.
Thank you. Can you just hand those all to Annette, please? Thank you.
Very good. And that's Mr. Kern right there. This is appeal number two zero one six four nine nine. Todd Kern is appealing a denial of a commercial cannabis registration by the planning director. Project description, again, an appeal of a denial of commercial cannabis registration by the planning director. The registration was denied for the following reasons. First, the applicant did not produce evidence that no later than May tenth, two thousand sixteen, cultivation, grading, or earth-moving commensurate with the area proposed to be developed had actually occurred on the site. The second reason is the application for registration contained false or misleading information. And our final cause for the denial here is the registrant failed to obtain a business license application by the September seventh deadline. Just to locate ourselves, this project is located out in West Point. It's two point four acres, a real small site actually. And it's at sixteen sixty-one Jurors Road, West Point, Township six north, range thirteen east, section two. And this is in District Two. It's actually from downtown West Point. You go out Bald Mountain Road and you get to Jurors Road. That's about a mile and a half out to the site from West Point. On June twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, the applicant Todd Kern filed a commercial cannabis cultivation registration for ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight square feet, a mixed-lite cultivation area. He was granted the application pending registration for that amount.
Could you slow down just a little bit?
I'll slow it down, Tim. I'd be glad to. Excuse me. And I'd like to move on to our first cause for the denial here. And this is that the applicant failed to meet the requirements of seventeen ninety-five, one sixty-five N three A and B. And that reads as follows. The registrant must provide evidence satisfactory to the planning director that no later than May tenth, two thousand and sixteen, he or she has taken demonstrable steps toward the development of a commercial medical cannabis cultivation site on the parcel as demonstrated by the criteria described in either A or B below. And A reads, date stamped photographic evidence of grading and or earth-moving commensurate with the area proposed to be cultivated. B reads, date stamped photographic evidence of cultivation commensurate with the area proposed to be cultivated. With the applicant's submittal came the plot plan you see up here on the screen. Jurors Road is to the left side here. This is Palmer going out this way, the right on the corner. It's like I say, it's about, it's a two-acre site, a little over two acres. It meets the minimum requirement. But you can see they're going to set up a nice green fence around their grow area and they've got seventy-five-foot setbacks from their property lines to the actual grow area itself. So that's what we're looking for as we move on into the project here. So this is the first evidence photograph. There were actually two evidence photographs submitted. And this, they're both dated April seventh, two thousand and sixteen. In this photograph here, we can see the screen fence that they've erected. And you can see a hoop frame over here, but we do not see any evidence of cultivation, grading, or earth-moving in this photograph. The second evidence photograph they presented is shown here. Again, the date is April seventh, two thousand and sixteen. And here we have quite a bit of activity going on. Got a couple of trucks. We have a big pile of earth right here. This is a bobcat and it appears that the bobcat is taking earth and loading it into these large pots over here. To the side there, you can see more hoop frames. So this is the evidence we were presented. This was the evidence that supposedly was, these were the activities supposedly occurring on the site on April seventh, two thousand and sixteen. We went to look at our aerial photography to see if this indeed had occurred. This is Jurors Road right here. This is Palmer going off to the side. Our site is right in here. The area to be developed is actually right here. This is taken May first, this is a terror server aerial. And as you can see on the site, May first, three weeks beyond the date of the evidence photos, we have nothing occurring on the site here. Let's move on to a Google aerial taken May thirty-first. This is eight weeks beyond the date on the evidence photographs. Again, we have Jurors Road.
It's eight weeks?
Eight weeks from April seventh, yes. So we have Jurors Road, we have Palmer right here. This is our site. At this point, you can see that the screen fencing has been erected around those three sides there. And that is a stockpile, a soil stockpile. I believe that little white dot right there is your bobcat. But you can see on May thirty-first, we do not see any large pots, any hoop frames, anything of that nature out here at all. So when it comes to having developed a site to meet the requirements of section seventeen ninety-five, one sixty-five N three A and B, we can see that there was no grading, no earth-moving, no cultivation, nothing like that going on on May thirty-first. And if you recall, the May first terror server aerial, we saw absolutely nothing on this site whatsoever. So because they failed to provide activities commensurate with the development of the ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight square foot development of the site, they failed to meet the requirements of section one sixty-five N three A and B. Moving on to our second cause for denial here, that would be false and misleading information. And I'd like to read the section that applies here. That is County Code section seventeen ninety-five, one seventy A four. A reads, the registration of a medical cannabis cultivation site pursuant to this chapter may be invalidated by the planning director for any of the following reasons. And number four reads, application for registration contained false or misleading information. We believe that the applicant submitted false information when these photographs that are dated April seventh were submitted. If we compare the activities that are presented here on this photograph, we can plainly see that those activities have not occurred at the point that the Google photo was taken on May thirty-first. As such, the false evidence was presented. It's misleading in terms that it shows us activities associated with cultivation that were supposed to take place prior to May tenth. Without the benefit of the aerials, we would have no way of knowing that indeed that, those activities did not occur. So for that reason, staff found that the photographs, the evidence photographs presented were both false and misleading and the planning director properly invalidated the application for registration for section seventeen ninety-five, one sixty-five A four. And the last reason the application was denied is this right here. Failure to provide us with a business license prior to September seventh, two thousand and sixteen. And that comes under the requirements of section seventeen ninety-five, one sixty-five N five A. That reads as follows. By September seventh, two thousand and sixteen, a registrant with a pending application for registration shall provide verifiable documentation to the planning department demonstrating that the registrant has completed all the following tasks for the medical cannabis cultivation operation located on the parcel to be registered. And A reads, receipt of a current valid business license pursuant to chapter five point oh four of the Calverus County Code. The registrant did not provide us with a business license application prior to September seventh. Subsequently, they did provide us this license application on February twenty-second. That was actually a couple of weeks before we actually issued the denial, which was on March seventh. I think I had some contact with them by then and they had gone ahead. I brought it to their attention, it could be a potential problem. They went ahead and brought in the license application when they heard a denial maybe on the way. But as such, presenting this on February twenty-second of this year, failed to meet the requirements for some of it on September seventh of last year and failed to meet the requirements of seventeen ninety-five, one sixty-five N five A. Those are all the reasons that this application was denied. If you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer them. You know, one thing I would like to mention actually before you maybe have a question or two is that I didn't show you on this, but as this project developed, this man here, Mr. Kern, I think did a pretty outstanding job in terms of meeting the setback requirements. It was a nice tidy site. I don't think they were actually inspected by code, but the actual physical work that ended up being done out there looked pretty clean. Doesn't make, take exception for these failures right here, but I'd like to commend him on the work he did on the site.
Thank you, Paul. Have you seen these receipts?
Well, I'm sure at one time I did see those receipts. Well, I'm sure at one time I did see those receipts.
Are they all?
No, I haven't.
They're all dated pre-May 10th? But it doesn't say when it was delivered.
No, I haven't seen these receipts, this is the first I've seen of it.
Okay, we're gonna come to you in one second.
No, I haven't seen these, I would believe, I don't, I would speculate on the purpose that the appellant is presenting these at this point, and I think that would be to show proof of cultivation by purchasing this. I'm not sure that the commission has addressed that before in terms of providing soil, does soil represent, you know, actual cultivation on the site? I think that may have come up before, but I believe that's probably why this evidence, Mr. Kern will have to explain this. To us, this would fall under the subsection C through K as supplementary evidence, okay? This to us is not necessarily primary evidence of cultivation.
And Ethan Turner, Deputy County Counsel, I just wanted to follow up on Paul's comment that even with these receipts, he still has to meet A and B and provide receipts as secondary evidence, as they call it, as C through K evidence. So he still has failed to meet the requirements of either A or B.
On N3, they have to show demonstrable steps towards, and then A, B, or C or D, which would be the date stamped receipts, right?
This is A and B.
In addition, right.
A or B, A or B, and then one of the following, C through K.
Okay, I would, does anybody have any other questions we want to just hear from the appellant now?
No.
Go to the appellant, and then I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions. Okay, we are ready for you.
Just wanna, let's start up by reading this. Hello, my name is Todd Kern, I'm the owner of 1661 Jurors Road, West Point. I'm a small farmer and businessman, I have a four-year-old son and have another child on the way. I'm not a lawyer, an engineer, or an accountant. I set out to meet all the requirements of the emergency ordinance and did so. Because the paperwork that had been provided overwhelmed me, I hired a law firm and a consultant to prepare and submit documents to the county. I believe all the documentation was adequate, except for some photos that the planning department says were backdated. I have no knowledge of this as these photos were submitted by my consultant. Despite that, I have documents to prove that I graded my property and had soil delivered by May 10th, 2016. A Google Earth image dated May 31st, 2016, soil and material delivered receipt clearly shows, I'm having a hard time reading this, I'll cut to the chase, that fence right there is about $30,000, it's 10-foot tall, and that was out of respect to the community, because I wanted, I wanted to be transparent as possible in this process. That pile of dirt was about $12,000. I wasn't building a spec home on this property. I had purchased those prior to even knowing this ordinance was coming about. When this ordinance came about, I had two properties that I tried to develop in West Point and Welceville, and I was on the developmental side, I mean, I had to be, it was, this is my baby, this is 12 years of everything I've worked for kind of coming, coming together on these two sites. I brought in a gentleman named Mark Davis, who was more or less a consultant and investor to a certain extent, and he, he took over the ordinance side of it, because quite frankly, it's a little bit over my, I was intimidated by it, and with this all changing in May, going to a canopy size rather than a plant number, there's a huge amount of planning that goes into that for me as a farmer, and I wasn't, I wasn't involved with this, I trusted him. I trusted the Harvest Law Group, who told me not to move forward on the business license until I had a permit, because why put the cart before the horse? I didn't wanna have a permit for, or a license to sell cannabis if I didn't have a permit to cultivate it. I mean, really, my heart of hearts absolutely 100% was in full compliance. I had no reason to lie, there was no reason to submit these pit photos. Yeah, I mean, I wish you guys had had a chance to see the site, I mean, it's absolutely gorgeous. I mean, we've really, we try to be as professional in every step of, every step of the process as possible.
How long have you owned the property?
Since April.
Okay, and so this is your first grow there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. When was the grading done?
There was very little grading done to the property, it was previously used for the, when the fire, they used it as kind of a little camp. So it, there's, the majority of the grading had been done, that's why the property appealed to me, and walking the property in April and March, when shaking the hand of the gentleman who holds the title currently, he knew I was cultivating, my real estate agent, you know, knew the purpose of me coming. When the ordinance came into place, it's a huge, there was a huge shift, because this $12,000 worth of soil was gonna be put into 99 bags and grow full term. When it came to canopy size, I had a tremendous amount of work ahead of me to figure out how within those constraints, I could maximize my earning potential. And I'm having a hard time articulating what I'm trying to say.
Take a deep breath, we're not gonna bite you.
Yeah, I'm just, I just can't believe this is happening.
Okay, so then my next question for you is, when did you physically start prepping that land?
Well, as soon as our fencing material came in, we started building that fence, it took us quite a few weeks to do, so it's, it's a pretty substantial fence, I think there's 500 or 600 lineal feet.
Was it in April?
The fencing material was ordered in April, it was delivered, I don't have an exact date. Mark Davis, who is a consultant, ordered that lumber, ordered a lot of these things, and has basically vanished.
The pictures of April 7th, are those your property?
They are my property, however, the photos that he submitted were not accurate to the proper date. I think he must have scrambled and taken those pictures and submitted them. I think the picture, I mean, it's clearly not, I mean, Paul and I spoke, and I admitted that, as soon, I had not even seen these.
Okay.
And until basically it was too late.
When did the grow bags show up and you start planting in them? I guess what I'm trying to determine is when the pictures were really taken?
I would say June.
Okay.
The soil was there in May, there again, when the ordinance came into place, we had previous orders that were in that had to be completely shifted around, because the amount of pots that we are now gonna use changed because of, going canopy, we went with greenhouses. If it was gonna be the 99 plants, it was just, it's completely different configuration altogether, so when that hit, a lot of things changed, we had to change orders, we had to do things to accommodate the new canopy size, because that's advantageous to us, so we had to sit down and figure out how we can best utilize it.
Did you have a contract with Mark Davis to do the work for you?
Not written, no, because he was a friend of my father's, they worked together at Toll Brothers for years and years, stand-up guy, developer, golfed with him, knew him well, I had thought, and he just kinda, he dropped the ball completely.
Okay, and on the business license, not being applied for until February?
We had had it filled out, and it was in our packet, Harvest Law, Courtney with Harvest Law had told us not to file for it until we had received the permit, because...
That was really bad information.
She also no longer works for Harvest Law.
Can you step up to the mic if you're gonna speak, please?
She's, she was fired from Harvest Law.
She no longer works with them.
Do you agree that the pictures that the planning department has presented, of the May 1st picture and the May 31st picture, that they're accurate representations of their property on those dates?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yeah, those are accurate.
I built that fence by myself, I mean, it took me a while, you know, so, I mean, that, yeah, we had intent. Full season does not go into a pot, if we're doing the 99 plants, typically that would not go into a pot until June 1st, rule of thumb. So, for me to have a bunch of bags out, and it would, they wouldn't be out, because they changed, the ordinance changed. So why would I have all those bags out and set when I'm waiting for my materials and I find out that we go to canopy size? Planning, you know, we had to plan for that.
The unfortunate thing is that the ordinance is set up to stop cultivation, I mean, not stop, but stop, the preparation for cultivation and stuff as of May 10th, and I, I don't know how you could have anticipated that, but that was the ordinance as enacted, and so that's why we're looking at what was on the ground.
Sure.
On or before May 10th, and that's, you know, we're constrained by the terms of the ordinance.
Sure.
And not by your good faith efforts to do a great job, which apparently you have done.
And so the May 1st photo, which is now up, that's also an accurate representation of what it looked like on May 1st?
Yes, sir.
And it doesn't look like there's any fencing either delivered or installed at that point?
Well, at May 1st, we didn't know that fencing was necessary.
Okay, understood, and there's no dirt that's been delivered or handled at any point?
It had been ordered, it had been purchased, it had not been delivered. They get, they, I mean, it's pretty common that there's a, they're backed, you know, they're backed it, because they're not delivering soil throughout the entire year.
And when was that dirt delivery done?
When was it?
Yeah.
We tried, I was, we've tried and tried to get ahold of Mark Davis, who was the consultant on this, and it's just been the perfect storm. But there was no, there was no need for him to submit those photos.
Well, the purpose of those photos, the intent of the ordinance is to have photos that show what was in existence as of May 10th.
Sure.
And, but even without those photos, which, I mean, yes, your consultant submitted false and misleading photos.
Yes, sir.
But even disregarding those photos, we still need to have proof that there was satisfaction of the ordinance on or before May 10th, and that's, that's our problem.
I don't think I heard the answer to the question about when was the soil actually delivered to the site?
May 7th.
Delivered physically to the site?
Yes, sir.
The receipts show April 27th as one receipt, and then May 9th.
That's purchased, that's purchasing the site.
There's a May 6th, actually. I'm sorry, for the record, could you state your name, please?
There's a May 9th, and there's a May 6th, yeah.
And this one doesn't have a date, well, it's covered. You got your seller's permit on the September, by the September 7th date?
We had it, we had it in place in our folder, but we had not had it signed off by the, I believe, the Sheriff's Department, yet.
The water board?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At the same time you were processing that, you weren't doing, let's see, the business license, where's...
And there is a difference between the seller's permit and the business license.
Okay.
You mentioned, I think, that you had bought $12,000 worth of soil?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the receipts I have before me don't seem to add up to that.
I was thinking of the other receipt that we were...
Is the Excel spreadsheet available, do you guys have that in front of you? Initially, when I had submitted my receipts, the owner of Appleseed Horticulture had broke it down in an Excel spreadsheet, and that was not preferable, and I think it was more or less thrown out.
Well, as I read what's before me here that you provided us today, it looks like there's an April 27th, 2016 receipt for, looks like $1,750 of soil, so I'm wondering when the other $10,000 got purchased?
It's on there, Paul?
If I may, there is, you mentioned the spreadsheet from...
Yes.
This is the spreadsheet, I'm gonna pass this to you.
Before I look at the spreadsheet, I have a question, who prepared the spreadsheet?
Appleseed Horticulture out of Plasterville.
Ah, okay, your provider, and it provided all of your soil?
They could have put everything, all our receipts in one, because there were so many, so they just did a spreadsheet for us.
When was the soil put into the pots?
So the spreadsheet shows that you've purchased it, but it doesn't show what date.
And that's why we got the other receipts, so that there was an actual date.
There's four of them, and they, April 27th, May 6th, May 9th, and...
The other one doesn't, doesn't...
And one without a date on it. That's only four out of, what are they, 10 line items or so, plus or minus? Shows paid at full May 1st, and the invoice is dated April 25th. Did you have a full season on this, and a harvest?
Yeah, we did. Not a full season, the way, the way that we're set up is for light deprivation, so it's basically about a 10-hour flower time, so versus a full-term season where you would typically plant in June, and you would harvest in October naturally by the, this, the moon and sun cycle, as days get shorter, the plants mature, but, and that's the end. We synthesize fall by pulling tarps over the greenhouses, which is about a 10-week process. And... fall by pulling tarps over the greenhouses, which is about a 10-week process. And we, I would imagine, I'm shooting for, you know, four harvests out of those greenhouses a year. This last year, it was a pretty major undertaking that the properties were, and we got one in.
So you have an indoor/outdoor grow?
No, ma'am.
But you use the hoop houses?
Yes, sir.
That's considered outdoor?
Yes, sir.
So there's three types of, of lighting requirements under state law, and it's reflected in our county code. There's all indoor, which is all artificial light. There's outdoor, which is all natural light. And then mixed light, which is a combination of natural lighting and artificial lighting. If it's in a greenhouse or a hoop house, but it's still using the sunlight, that's considered an outdoor grow.
So, yeah, yes, sir, no, no supplemental light was added? If anyone's curious to see what the site looks like, I do have a picture.
What did you say the site was prepped for before you bought the property?
It was the staging area for the fire. It appealed to us, because we didn't have to do any tree removal or any, you know, change the landscape at all.
So you didn't have to do any grading whatsoever, because it was pre-graded?
Very little. We did a little bit towards the backside of the property, but nothing, uh, nothing requiring any real heavy machinery. We used a Bobcat to kinda skim and move some dirt miscellaneous, leaving...
At what time did you do that grading?
In June. Once we found out, once we started to appropriate funds and start to kinda plan what we were gonna do, once the ordinance came about. Because it was, it was a lot more money than what we were initially planning to do.
Do you have any further new evidence to present to the commission? Because then we can go to public comment.
I appreciate you guys' time on this.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
Well, this one is interesting to me. It's just down the road from the property, and I get to see it quite often. I can say they did a fine job, but you're gonna have to rule on the ordinance itself, and not how, they seem to be fine people, but, sorry, Charlie.
Does anybody else have any public comment? Okay, thank you. Any rebuttals?
No.
Okay. All right, well then we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Well, I think this, uh, this is remarkably a good example of how hard facts can end up making it very hard to decide in accordance with the, with the law. The way I read the ordinance, it is really looking to, to freeze cultivation as of May 10th, 2016. The Section 3 of the law has a sentence in it saying, "In short, this ordinance freezes allowable cannabis cultivation in the county to the status quo prior to May 10th, 2016, and expressly prohibits all additional cannabis cultivation in the county." And when we look at the subdivision N 3, A through K, subdivision K says, "Any similarly reliable documentary evidence satisfactory to the planning director that establishes that medical cannabis was planted and grown on the parcel to be registered prior to May 10th, 2016." And we have the question of the earth moving, which I believe we considered at the previous hearing on some other, on some other applicant, that the earth, earth moving does not include just the delivery of earth. Is, is, does the planning department have a clear position on that? Whether the delivery of earth constitutes earth moving? And how do you distinguish between grading and earth moving?
We consider them synonymous. I think it just was a term of art that we use to try to clarify that grading typically implies a grading permit, but we knew that a lot of grading was occurring, earth moving was occurring without a permit, so we wanted to make sure it was clear that any disturbance of the soil, disturbance of the natural soil on the site required, that had to, had to have been done prior to May 5th to accommodate cultivation.
May 10th?
By, May 10th, excuse me, yes.
That's a date that...
I have no idea why it came out wrong.
But then, when you get to the subdivisions or whatever they are, C E through K, those are things that at least one has to be in addition to the A, satisfaction of A or B. Here, as I understand it, the, the planning department's position would be, there was no, there has been no proof of grading or earth moving before, on or before May 10th, and no evidence of cultivation.
And in cer, certain circumstances, in this case, had they shown us a photograph of what was there on that time, and granted, the ordinance wasn't adopted until 11 o'clock on May 10th, so it was really hard to go home and take pictures.
Right.
But if they'd come in with photographs taken the next day, showing, here is the site, it didn't require grading, and then here's the receipt showing that we had made other investments, we have actually accepted that as, you know, if, if no grading was occurred, but there was investment made, then that would have been acceptable. Here instead, the consultant apparently tried to, you know, show us these other pictures, taken much after, you know, much later. We had no photographic evidence of what was on the site. No grading was required. You already had a prepared site. Sort of the, the components of the ordinance was that we didn't want to see any more land disturbance in the preparation of cultivation. But knowing that on May 10th, most cultivators did not have plants in the ground, that they typically aren't planted until the end of May or around June 1st, that was an accommodation that was made to understand the, the industry, and that, but if they had prepared the site, you know, that wasn't gonna go away. Here we had a site that was previously prepared, it was used for something else, but could have very easily had just the, the pots put down. But unfortunately, they tried to provide us with other information to, to indicate that they were already growing, and that, that was where this application fell short.
But here, if, I mean, A and B both require date-stamped photographic evidence that, no later than May 10th. If they had provided you with photographs that looked just like that...
An already cleared site, with indication, this is where we're gonna put our, that would have been acceptable.
How would that have satisfied A and B?
It was our interpretation that if a site had previously been graded and didn't require any new grading, you already had a flat cleared area, and all it needed to be done was to plop down pots, that that was the same as somebody who had come in a week before and had graded something. So if it had been graded a year ago or three years ago, it was already prepared.
And he did state that he did grade on June, in June, which was after the deadline. Hold on one second, please.
I thought one of the reasons for the requirements of A and B, which is either cultivation or grading or earth moving, was to demonstrate an investment that had already taken place. And so if you had a situation where you had a piece of flat land that didn't have any brush on it, that didn't require any grading whatsoever, that, yes, it might be suitable for cultivation without that work, but there was no investment, if you will, in terms of grading or earth moving. And so I'm not sure I agree with the idea that if the site's already prepared for other reasons...
Well, and that's the...
That A and B is automatically satisfied.
And the C through K was to assist in making that determination of substantial investment?
Well, but you, but you agree that A and B, A or a B have to, have to be satisfied?
Yes.
Regardless of whether they can also show satisfaction with something in C through K?
Yes.
All right. Now, where I'm at on this is similar, I think, to Commissioner Lattish, just the way this ordinance is set up. This is one of those unfortunate cases, where somewhat perversely, people who held off until they knew which, what was gonna be happening, get penalized, and people who jumped the gun get rewarded. But that's how it works, and we are bound to apply it. And we just, e, even if you assume that earth moving could include taking soil from a stockpiling and putting it in the pots, even if you assumed that, that didn't happen here until mid-June. And so really, all we have is delivery of the soil prior to May 10th. And I don't think that that qualifies as either cultivation or earth moving. And so I don't see that, that this ordinance had been satisfied.
Just have one more comment, and that is, I think we have an example here of the best intentions, to do a responsible job of growing, cultivating marijuana, trying to comply with the statute. The statute, or the ordinance itself is quite complex, but it's quite specific. And it would be, I, I, I do not believe it would be consistent with the ordinance for us to decide. I think we would have to ignore several of the provisions of the ordinance in order to decide in favor of the good faith efforts that, that this applicant has shown.
The sad thing is, is he was giving bad information, because even if you look past the grading part, he still did not get his business license until February. It was supposed to be done by September 7th. So he was giving bad advice. Your site looks beautiful by the pictures. It looks like you've worked really hard. But one of the parts of the thing is you have to have your business license by September 7th, and it wasn't even applied for until February. So that was obviously very late.
It appears to me, if the staff report analysis is accurate, though I didn't ask you about it, Paul, but say that with his signature, that Todd Kern, under penalty of perjury, certified the photographs, were complete, truthful, and accurate. So he did sign that application himself, not Mr. Davis or his...
Okay, well, if there's no further comments, is there any amendments to the resolution, or do you want to...
I do have a couple of suggestions on the resolution.
I'm sorry.
Okay, on, under finding number two, under the evidence, the last sentence that says the April 7th date is misleading because it depicts cultivation required to occur on the parcel, et cetera, I don't think it depicts cultivation. I think it depicts activity, which is the word Mr. Grow used in his presentation. And so I think it should read, "The April 7th date is misleading because it depicts activity occurring on the parcel prior to May 10th, 2016, which did not occur then, as evidenced by the aerial photographs of May 1 and May 31, 2016."
Well, the picture, though, that he had on the screen depicted the white pots. So it did, I believe, it did depict cultivation that they submitted.
If you included white pots as being cultivation, cultivation was a defined term in the Health and, in the Business and Professions Code that we ran across before. It says cultivation means any activity involved in the planting, growing, harvesting, drying, carrying, grading, or trimming of medical cannabis. My view was that starts with planting.
Okay.
But I don't know that we need to decide that. If we use the word activity, that...
Yeah.
That covers it.
Okay.
I think I'd suggest, on your, on your suggestion, that maybe take out the reference to May 1st, because the, the pictures are clear that as of May 31st, those activities had not occurred.
Well, it didn't occur by May 1st either. Nothing occurred by...
But May 10th is in between May 1st and May 31st.
But this has to do with, with the, with the misleading nature of things. And what the May 1st picture proves is that the April 7th date was misleading. That's all I had on the resolution.
Okay, well, I'm good with changing that one word. Commissioner Sis, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No.
Commissioner Batelli?
Then we will look to seek to get into motion to, on the resolution. I mean, we'll need Paul to read it.
Very good. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution 2017026 as amended, denying appeal 2016-499, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to reject the application 2016-499.
As amended?
As amended.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
This action is final unless appealed within 15 calendar days to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, appeal number, item number five, 2016534. Paul, you're presenting this one as well?
Yes, me.
Before we move forward on it, there's a request for an extension of time that was submitted?
That's correct.
Pardon me?
That's correct. There was a request for an extension of time. I believe I forwarded an email to all of you last week.
Oh, yeah. Do you want to see a copy of it? Do you have a copy? I don't. Okay, request... Request for a continuance of an appeal was sent out to Kelly, to all the commissioners. Please find attached a request for a continuance of 30 days from Patrick. This is not the right one.
That doesn't sound like it.
Lisa.
I have the right one.
This is a request in extension to April 27th, so.
No, that's not-
Never mind, here it is. We got it six days ago from you. Public records request will be reviewed, blah, blah, blah. Okay. So we do have it. That letter is the right letter. So would you, do you want to say anything on discussing a continuance? Yes, your position?
I think the position of the Planning Department would be to have the appeal heard today. There's, it's a pretty straightforward case as far as whether they submitted the business license or not. The request for the public records, I really don't believe has anything, any merit, any impact on the basic facts surrounding the failure to submit the business license. So we would propose that this appeal be heard today.
Okay.
Would you respond?
Yes, please.
Absolutely. First of all, the reasons for the denial were changed subsequent to the denial being issued initially. Convictions that-
I'm gonna, you know what, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you for one second. Can you please introduce yourself?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Absolutely. My name is Matthew Clark. I'm an attorney in Angels Camp, and I'm the attorney for BLB Collaborative Farms.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Absolutely. Yes, I would say. The reasons for the denial were changed subsequent to the initial denial letter. Convictions that formed the basis of the denial at first were removed. It turns out that they were not actually convictions, they were just charges. And so we spent some time after the initial denial letter investigating those matters. The lack of a business license is not as simple as it seems. The reality is that no business licenses were accepted or were in place as of September 7th, only business license applications. This is a significant due process problem. It requires a significant amount of time to research the fundamental issues that go into that due process problem, and the expenses of doing so were moved without, until the convictions came through.
You don't think somebody could get a business license by September 7th?
It's our contention that no one had a business license on September 7th.
That's true. We did not actually approve the business license because we hadn't approved registration yet. So in order to establish compliance with that requirement, we required the submittal of the business license application. And we've discussed this several times before, where the, as long as the application was submitted, typically the applicant would go from the treasurer tax collector, where they take out the application, to the assessor's office. The assessor's office would sign off and then submit it to county, to the planning, and then we would say, okay, well, we'll hold this. This satisfies this requirement because we can't issue it until we're ready to issue the, ensure that the applicant has satisfied all other requirements of the registration. And so in some instances, they would bring the application directly to us without going by the assessor's office first. That was also acceptable. But we didn't issue the first business license until we issued the first registration, which was sometime later in September.
If I may, before going into the merits of what Mr. Mallor just said, what he indicated is that this is not a simple issue.
Okay, so what is the basis for your continuance? Give us that. Let's stick on track on that right now.
Yes, the basis is that the initial denial was changed. The duration of the hearing was not as a result. No additional time was given. Getting to the bottom of these due process considerations is a significant amount of research and time and a significant expense for my client that would have been useless if those convictions had not been overturned, which they later were. As soon as those convictions were overturned, we began immediately preparing the expense and the significant time required to dig into this hardly simple due process issue. And we would like more time to do that. Public records requests have been initiated. Despite what Mr. Grow said, they do actually strike directly at the heart of the matter.
Would you explain that? What public information requests?
Yes, we have requests in for documents from the tax collector regarding what sort of processes and recording was available for the business license application, which forms the basis of these people's denial in lieu of the actual business license.
Has the resolution changed other than one removal? Are the items that are there the original items that were given to, for denial?
Yes.
So nothing's changed in the resolution based on your first denial, except for you got one removed? The others are still existing conditions?
The other, yes. Not plural.
Nothing was added?
Correct.
Okay.
If I may interject here. Mr. Clark and his, and the applicant was informed that the background check reason for the denial had been dropped, rescinded. And that was actually told to him on March 29th. That is a month ago. So I would be, our contention that within the last month, we've had more than enough time to prepare to present this case on the business license.
Okay, can we see if there's any public comment that people would like to make, please? Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this appeal on the continuance? No? Okay. Then I guess I will bring it back to the commissioners and we can make a decision on if we want to do the continuance or have the hearing today.
I personally would be interested in whatever arguments could be made on the business license subject and the ordinance because both the activities that have been done and have been accepted and this sort of thing are different than what we're contemplated by the Board of Supervisors. So we are interpreting this ordinance as best we can, and I think we need all the help we can get. So I'd be in favor of the continuance.
I'd like to hear it today.
Looking at your appeals received March 13th, when did you submit the records request?
April 21st.
So you took five weeks.
But March 13th is not the date when we found out that various aspects of the denial were changed or were removed.
Well, you certainly knew as of March 13th that one of the arguments or one of the bases of denial was the lack of the business license. So you could have submitted a records request then.
It's true. The fact is that digging into these due process claims was a significant expense for my client that would have been useless if the convictions had remained.
I'm still not sure what due process claim could you be making? I don't understand it.
I mean, the reality is that necessary mandatory documents for these, for the registration were never submitted. The urgency ordinance has not been followed at any point. The business licenses, there were almost no business licenses that were accepted as of September 7th. And then meanwhile, at the tax collector's office, there was no recording, there was no way of knowing who brought, who took out these applications.
Their knowledge has nothing to do with it, I can see. But wouldn't the essence here of your argument be that, and I'm just guessing, that your client didn't know that he could have walked 10 steps over to get a copy of the application or-
With all due respect, Mr. Commissioner, I think we're approaching the merits here. And I'd like the opportunity to spell my case out normally.
Well, the business license issue was included in the original denial letter of February 24th of this year. And you learned that the conviction issue had been dropped March 29th.
Correct.
The only basis in your written request is because you've submitted a public records request. That's the basis for the continuance, which wasn't done until April 21.
May I see the March 29th letter? Okay.
So on that basis, I don't see why a continuance would be appropriate here. I prefer to go forward.
Would you like to weigh in? Or you did?
Well, I did weigh in, and then, and I'm just, I'd be interested in being educated on this.
Okay, so I have one that wants a continuance, two that do not. And Commissioner Batelli?
I'm flip-flopping.
Okay, well, I'll re-
I mean, generally, I think people should be granted extensions and continuances if they make sense or they're needed. I just haven't quite been able to put my thumb on Jello and figure out exactly what the records would produce for you in the most favorable way.
Well, we'd like to find out, wouldn't we?
Well, the staff has admitted that the actual license itself couldn't have been provided, which was what your argument was.
And the implications of the fact that the urgency ordinance calls for business licenses to have existed on September 7th, but they never did. That is a significant issue that I think requires time to investigate. And we have not been lax or lagging in, you know, our attempts to solve this matter. The fact is that it digs down to deep constitutional issues, both from the California, the U.S. Constitution. I mean, it's a significant problem with very little case law behind it. It's an incredibly unusual decision to have suspended, to have basically authorized 750 businesses to do business in Calaveras without a license. Cannabis businesses much less.
Well, I have a very, very strong response to that, but since we're discussing the continuance, I'm going to withhold my comment at this time. They operated illegally, period. So let's not forget that. Now, I guess I need-
They operated illegally?
They didn't have a permit or a license to be growing the last 20 years. And then in stepping up to commercial, we had to create an urgency ordinance to protect our county. So-
Oh, you're, okay, you're talking, I'm not referring to this particular-
I am, I am. So let's go back to, I am, because, yeah, let's not go there. We can have the hearing today, or we can do a continuance. Commissioner Batelli, if you don't know what you-
I'll agree to his continuance this one time.
Great, thanks. Now you put me on the spot. I'll tell you what, I think that I'm going to allow the continuance, and I'll explain myself as to why. Not because of due process, because I'm not buying into that. I'm going to allow it because if the evidence isn't before us, then it goes to the supervisors and you still won't have it. And I would rather have the evidence before us be able to look at all of it and make our decision so that you don't need to take it to court. We can end it here if it needs to be ended. So that's my opinion. So we will allow for the continuance because we do have three votes for that.
So I would, you need a motion, and I would recommend you continue to a date certain.
So date certain, is that going to be the May 25th date as well?
That would be best.
Okay, so-
How are we doing on the agenda on May 25th?
Bring your sleeping bag. We've got several that are coming up, and then we're going to try to push a few back from the next meeting because neither Julie nor Kelly will be here. So we're trying to make that agenda a little bit lighter, if we can.
On the 11th.
On the 11th.
So we're putting in your thing on the 25th?
So 25th would be probably a pretty full agenda.
we extend it to June? If you feel like we're getting too stacked on the 25th?
We could.
I think that would probably, would you be acceptable to that?
We have no objection to that.
Okay.
So June, June 9th.
And you're still good with that?
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry, June 8th.
June 8th. We're going to change, we're going to keep changing it for you.
Yes.
All right. So can we get a motion to-
I move that we continue this particular item to June which now?
8th.
June 8th.
Right. I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, 3-2. Motion passes for June 8th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are, we have a continuance on number six. So we are, right? Okay. So we're going to move on to number seven. And this one is Appeal of Denial Commercial Cannabis for 201- Do you want to hear me? Okay. This is appeal number 2016-517. We probably, we might take it all. Miguel, you're going to present this one for us?
Yes, just give me a second to download it.
Well, Miguel is getting prepared. Just, we had a few minor revisions to the findings, the resolution itself. And so that's what I'm just, is being passed around right now. And when we get to that point, I'll go over the changes that we made. Is Mr. Pratt in the audience?
So whenever the Planning Commission's ready?
Oh, we're ready. We've been waiting on you.
So good morning to the Planning Commission. This is Miguel with the Calaveras County Planning Department. Today, I'm here to present Appeal 2016-384. This is an appeal by Charles Pratt of, it's a appeal of-
I'm having such a hard time hearing you. I'm sorry, Miguel.
I'm sorry. This is an appeal of a commercial cannabis registration denial by the Planning Director. The subject parcel is located at 6350 Quartz Line Trail in Mount Ranch. And the reasons for denial by the Planning Department is failure to submit a complete notice of intent to the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. Second reason is failure to submit a Calaveras County business license application by September 7th, 2016. And there was also false and misleading information that was provided with the application. So for the first complaint, failure to meet 17.95.165.0 and complete- So, for the first complaint, failure to meet 17.95.165.I and incomplete NOI. Mr. Pratt submitted a, on September 7th, he submitted a notice of intent to the water board. One of the questions, number four, asks if the cultivation site was developed, if it was developed as of October 2nd, 2015, to which Mr. Pratt answered, yes, that his cultivation site was developed as of 2015. Because of this answer, he was not required to answer other questions that were applicable to him. And later on, the water board found that his cultivation site was developed after October 2nd, 2015.
I'm sorry, can you just go back one second here because, okay, I thought that said, never mind, I see the date better now.
Okay. So, once more, he didn't, he didn't complete the application questions in his NOI. Here's a terrorist server image from October 5th, 2015. It's going to be the top left one. You could see in the middle, there's a house, and in comparison to what-
Could you use the laser pointer to guide us through this?
So, right here, you could see the house. This is where the site will ultimately be developed. And once more, this is October 5th, 2015. This is May 31st, 2016, and this is what the site ultimately looked like. So, the water board was correct in stating that Mr. Pratt did not develop the site as of October 2nd, 2015, and therefore, he was required to answer all applicable questions. And this is just a close-up.
Are we going to, we're going to get back to that, the what was in the lower right-hand corner photograph?
Yeah, we will. Let me just continue on with this. So, on October 27th, 2016, the water board sent out a letter to Mr. Pratt stating that his application was incomplete because of, because of that reason, that he provided, or that he said that his cultivation site was developed prior to October 2nd, 2015. And therefore, he was required to fill out other questions, and he was required to submit other studies and other documentation, which he didn't. Mr. Pratt received this letter, or this letter was sent out October 27th, so he received it shortly. Mr. Pratt made no effort to come into compliance with the water board until, until February 16th, when Mr. Pratt was made aware that because of this, he was potentially facing denial of his cannabis cultivation. The secondary complaint is failure to meet 17.95.165.N and .5.A late business license. This business license was received by the Calaveras County Planning Department on September 8th. You can see the date stamp right here of when it was received. The business license was signed September 6th, 2016 by Mr. Pratt. There's really nothing else that was filled out by any other county office. The assessor never signed off on it. The assessor never put the APN on it. For this, this is essentially just a late deny, or a late submission of this document that was required by September 7th.
So, you relying upon the date of the submission, not the absence of the other entries on that?
Yes. So, the, this application was available at the tax collector's office as well as at the website. I believe Commissioner Ladish asked me to clarify where an applicant could receive this document. And in the instructions, the requirement, you know, stated that a business license is required by September 7th, as well as in the urgency ordinance. And lastly, our third complaint is that it's pursuant to 17.95.170.A.4, which the application contained false and misleading information. There were two photographs submitted with the registration. This is one of them. As you can see, there are numerous pots with three to four-foot tall plants on them. Over here in the shade, you could see other cannabis plants that haven't been planted yet. And this picture is dated May 9th, 2016. However, aerial imagery from May 31st, 2016 contradicts, contradicts this. And this is the secondary picture. One of the things to note between these two pictures that were submitted is that they're essentially the same picture, because one has a handwritten date of 6/5/2016. I'm not sure who, who wrote that date, if it was the appellant or the appellant's representation. But comparing these two pictures, they're essentially the same. The only one, the only difference is that this is cropped and a date is superimposed on it. Everything else is the same. There's a yellow bag right here. There's some fencing material over here, the plants over here, and same scenario right here. And this is what the aerial image shows on May 31st. As you can see, contrary to the photograph that was submitted May 9th, there are no plants on the ground.
That's the question I have. It looks to me as if there's green in those, in the, in what is the upper half of the-
Over here?
Planting, yeah. That compared with the others, which look empty, it appears there's some green in that.
No, I mean, I would say that that is soil. These are already filled up with soil. These ones haven't been filled up with soil. However, if these, if these things, or if these pots or holes in the ground contain three to four plants, they would cast a shadow, and you would be able to see some sort of black, which you don't at all in this, this image.
Can you go back one photo, please? Okay. So, it appears that the potted plants are at the top right there. If you look at the direction of the road, there's two separate piles of pots. Does that match the previous photo?
We have some pots right here, but as you can see, these plants are more mature. These, you can't really see any evidence of plants. They could be seedlings, or the pots could be empty.
I think the major issue that we saw was that the planting holes, that sort of the gray, gray-green color is the color of the soil, but there are no plants in those holes. You'd be able to see the plants that were as large as what was presented in the pictures that were submitted to us.
Yeah, I realize that. I just wondered if they were smaller. What's the date on this picture?
This is May 31st.
So, three weeks later than what the previous picture showed.
And just like other similar hearings that we've had with false and misleading photos, due to the fact that these, the photos that were submitted were false and misleading, that were found to be inadequate evidence of cultivation, so that was a fourth complaint that was added to the resolution, which is a violation of 17.95.165.N.3 of not submitting adequate photos that show cultivation prior or on May 10th, 2016. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions.
I've forgotten now. What, when did the planning department receive a copy of the application that was made to the water board, Water Quality Control Board?
October 27th, 2016.
So, no matter what the contents of that were, it was late?
I'm sorry, I don't know if I-
Steve, if, was there a requirement that you receive a copy of his notice of intent and stuff with the Water Quality Control Board on or before September 7th?
We did receive a copy of his notice of intent, and it is in his file.
And it was before September 7th that you received that?
Yes.
So, the issue becomes whether it was a complete-
Correct.
-application to the Water Quality Control Board, and that's when this October 15th date comes relevant.
Correct.
Okay, is the appellant present here today?
Yes.
Oh, please come on up to the mic. Hi.
Hello.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Charles Pratt.
Okay. And this is-
Hi, my name is Catherine Pratt, and I'm here to assist in Mr. Pratt's representation. I, after observing how your proceedings were, it looks as if he's in a better place to answer your specific questions about dates, times. I am in charge of the response, the general response to your denial of his growing.
Okay, and you are who? I'm sorry.
I'm Catherine Pratt. I am his mother, and I'm an attorney in Texas.
Okay.
And this is something we have a vested family interest in, the purchase of property.
Okay.
So, if it's okay, I'm just going to give him a copy of the first three points. He knows. I've got the pictures here. No one likes to speak in public.
Just to keep everything straight, Mr. Pratt, I assume you have authorized your attorney, your mother-
Yes.
-to speak on your behalf?
Can I just, I just want to ask, are you authorized to practice law in the state of California?
No, absolutely not. And I called and discussed that.
So, you're a lay, you're just a lay agent for the purpose of this hearing, then?
Perhaps. I do have a vested interest in, in the proceedings, due to the fact that the family, our family, invested in this. But yes, I totally acknowledge I'm not licensed in the state of Texas, in the state of California. And no, I wasn't really involved in much of this to begin with. It was started out in a different part of the family.
Thank you. Okay, so would you like to give us your presentation on the-
Okay, so, Mr., we have these three photographs.
These were all submitted by John Stevens, who was representing me at the time. Who?
Is he a partner?
No, he was supposed to be my lawyer, but he was fraudulent.
Okay.
What we have here, Fletcher came out here, he was 21, 22, purchased the property before the Butte fire with the intent to live here, because this is sort of the lifestyle he found, and he's not a big city guy. He wanted to be out in the country.
Mr. Pratt, could you be a little closer to the microphone, please?
Yes. Mr. Pratt's intent was to move here to start a business and a lifestyle. He likes the weather here, the people. He had been recommended to a specific place to start his business. He was here before the Butte fire, which shows his, his good faith intent, that he was here for a permanent reason. And certainly, he's filed all the applicable papers, complied with every regulation that he knew about, well, every regulation. There's some discrepancy about dates. There's some discrepancy about photos. And what he has been telling me is that he hired an attorney at the beginning of the process, John Stevens, and as other people have said, there was a lot to absorb in the emergency ordinance. So, he hired this person to represent him. You do have a picture in your file with the 5/9 date stamp. Mr. Pratt's contention is that his attorney submitted all these pictures. As you said, there's no way to really tell. There's handwriting of dates on, of two different dates, May 31st and June 5th. But then we have this one that says 5/9/16, which shows plants in the ground. I'm not sure what the confusion about the dates is, but what he has told me is that really, the season for planting starts in June, and so he was cultivating. He had, he had, clearly, he had all the holes. He had graded the land and maybe, we'll see, what's the third thing?
All groundwork was done. All dirt was purchased. And I was cultivating prior to May 10th.
He had purchased everything.
That's what these little plants are, the top and bottom.
And cleared the trees, done the groundwork and grading. And he has the evidence here in all of these pictures of the, of the cultivation. It's kind, it's kind of his attention that Mr. Stevens either was never licensed to practice law, or was fraudulently practiced in law, and has, and that that was an alias for his real name. Now, I checked in the, checked in the state law records, and I couldn't really tell the way yours work. I didn't have much time to do that. But I would assume you've heard this name before, since it's a local attorney. Is he local? John Stevens?
No, but he represented Greg Stapleton. He was the only person who won his appeal in Calaveras County.
So, given the fact, Fletcher came out here on his own. He's a kid. I call him a kid. He's an adult. But he started this business in very, did a very impressive amount of work with borrowed money and money he had already earned. Not to get away from the specifics, but let's go back to the three points. Where do we put those? So, the first one is the pictures. I would say absolutely that there was no intent to falsify any, any information or avoid any procedure necessary. This is a huge project.
But didn't Mr. Pratt review the application that he signed?
Did you sign the application?
Which application?
The application to the planning department.
Application to the face.
He signed it on the 6th, I believe. Isn't that right?
I mean, that's not my signature.
It's not?
So, you submitted an application without your signature?
His attorney submitted the application with a signature that's dated September 6th. This is March-
I'm talking about in June, the original application for registration with the planning department.
Oh.
So, yeah, he submitted that June 27th, 2016, signed by-
And it was, was it signed by you?
Fletcher Pratt.
That one, the one in June of 15, or June of 16.
Can you show him, Miguel, and let him look at the signature, please?
Yes, I signed that.
So, that application had these photos in it? So, you reviewed the application before you signed it?
No, I did not.
Were the photos included with that?
Yes, it was a requirement, so they were included.
Okay, so, and who prepared those for you?
John Stevens prepared this.
What is the form in front of you that you say is not your signature?
This one? This is-
The business license?
Business license.
Yeah, it doesn't appear to be Mr. Pratt's signature.
Who would have done that for you?
John Stevens.
Okay, so you didn't go around and apply for the business license? He was doing that for you?
He was supposed to be doing a lot of things for me. He just neglected to do his job, and he falsified a lot of information.
Which was not brought to his attention until he received letters identifying him with problems, such as an incomplete NOI.
So, let's, let's go to, unless you have more evidence you want to submit, I'd like to ask him some questions.
Sure. Let me look at the third point. Action to remedy. There was one other point, which I think you need to address, is that he did not cultivate before that October deadline. So, if there's an arrow in the forms, that's probably something that should be addressed and you can ask him about. But what he has told me is that if you did not, did not cultivate before the October 15th, then that that's why this form is wrong, that he did not say, he didn't cultivate until 2016, because 2015 was when he moved here, went through the fire, and started planning. Purchased the property before the fire and started planning. That he did not cultivate before 6th, October 16th.
I think that-
So, anyway, I'll-
October 2015 date is the only key in that, that the Water Quality Control Board has its own requirements. And so, therefore, in their form, they ask whether he had or had not. And if, if he had not, well, then there were a bunch of other questions he needed to answer.
So, that is the form I couldn't see on the board.
So, that's just the first page. I have the complete application here if you want to look at it.
Mr. Pratt, do you receive your mail at that address, the court's?
No, I do not. It's all sent to 1707 Burnside Drive, which is not my address. That's my, that was John Stevens' address, who was representing me. And so, even after I changed my addresses and fired him after I found out the falsified information, I continued to not receive mail, including the denial to my business, which I did not even receive. I had to get a copy of, from the planning department.
Okay, on your application that you submitted, your original application, what mailing address did you use?
He used 6350 Quartz Mine Trail Mountain.
That's my address. That's the project site.
And that's where you received your mail?
That's where I'm supposed to receive all my mail.
Okay, and that's the address that was on the water board document as well?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so you should have been receiving those notifications as you were moving along if they were going to that address, right?
Yes.
Okay. When did you start, when did you start the cultivating?
I started cultivating in April. I popped my seeds. There were seedlings. And in the photo, you can see that, I mean, I was doing everything you guys required me to do by May 10th. I had all my groundwork done. The dirt was there and purchased for it. And I had several plants ready to go into the ground. But you don't plant until June because of size. You don't put a little plant this big into a hole that's five by five because it would just die.
Okay, so you do agree that the photo that was submitted is incorrect?
Yes, I do. But I, what I disagree with is that I wasn't doing anything. I was not, I was doing everything I was supposed to be doing by May 10th. Because technically, I was cultivating. I had my groundwork done. All my dirt was purchased. Yes, half the holes were empty, but that was because my business partners at the time were not helping me. And they were supposed to be helping me. And they actually also basically robbed me at the end of the season.
Okay, so the May 31st photo that was on the screen, are those pots empty? Some have soil, some don't?
Yes.
Is that an accurate depiction of what you think was happening on May 31st?
But I am cultivating in that picture. And I can point out where I'm cultivating. The only reason they weren't in holes in the ground is because that's, that's not how growing works.
Okay, so the smaller pots are your cultivating, the beginnings of your cultivating? Is that what you're saying?
In front of the house and...
In front of the garden.
So right here and here. The smaller plants were for the lower garden and the bigger plants were for the path.
When did you have all the grading done?
It was done prior to May 10th.
Was it that way when you bought it?
No, but I purchased the property in 2015.
Okay, and you graded it?
Yes.
When?
Before April.
Was it before or after Butte fire?
After Butte fire. But I purchased the property about a month before the Butte fire.
Did you ever get notice that you needed to fill out more paperwork with the water board?
No.
If it was being mailed to your address, why do you think you didn't get it?
Honestly, I think that my business partners and my lawyer were against to me because I met my lawyer through my business partners. And a lot of people know about him too. John Stevens is a pretty well-known person up here.
Okay. The problem is that you are the registered applicant, not him.
Right.
So the responsibilities unfortunately fall upon you. You're the one signing the perjury statement. So that's kind of how we have to look at this. The business license application you never applied for, that's not your signature. Is that what you said earlier?
Yes.
Okay. And you think he did that as well?
Yes.
Did you ever follow up and get a business license?
Yes, I think, yes. I think so.
I don't believe, or when would you have done that?
You would have, you would have started at the application at the tax collector.
Is there any evidence of it?
I have no evidence of it. And I received a list from the assessor's office showing the majority of people who have submitted a business license application with them. And his APN was not on it, nor his name.
Okay. Okay. That's all the questions I have. Does anybody else have questions?
Yes. The, the photo that's dated June 5th is one date and May 9th is the other date of 2016. When was that actually taken?
This picture right here?
Correct.
You know, May, May 15th, I believe.
Then the picture that the Google shot doesn't show those plants.
You said you didn't plant until June.
Yeah, I did not plant my plants into the holes in the ground and were in the lower garden until June because, because they were not big enough to go in the ground.
Okay. So you don't know when that picture was taken?
I don't know.
But it was after May 10th. If you didn't plant until June?
Yes, the picture was taken after May 10th, but that's irrelevant because I was still cultivating and still had everything done.
What's not irrelevant is the photo is misleading because it's date stamped May 9th.
That's true.
And what we're trying to do, and then when we look at May 31st, there still was no plants. So what we're looking at is this photo as misleading evidence. And we're trying to decipher when, and in May 31st, there still was no plants planted. But you indicated you started planting in June.
I understand that, but I did not submit those photos.
Our problem is, is that we don't have any date stamped photographs that are valid indications of what you did have in the ground or in pots as of May 10th. That's, that's our problem.
Is this picture from May 10th?
No, that's May 31st.
Do you have a satellite photo of May 10th?
No.
No.
But...
We don't have one for every day, as I understand.
Yeah, that's correct.
When did you do the grading on the property? I missed that.
I did the grading of the property prior to May, before May.
Maybe in 2016?
Yeah, probably the beginning, the beginning of 2016.
Do you have any photographs prior to May 10th that show that grading?
Not with me.
Anywhere?
I would probably have to call a couple of people because my phone was stolen. But I definitely have time stamped photos on one of my friend's phones.
But those were not submitted to the planning department, correct?
I don't understand why a photo was taken May 31st if the issue is May 10th. Because I know if you had a satellite photo of May 10th, you would still see I'm cultivating. You'd still see the groundwork done. And you'd still see dirt in half the holes.
Because on May 10th, the photo that is submitted to us shows plants in the pots and plants outside of the pots. And then we get a photo that's several weeks after that point showing there's no plants being grown in the pots. So the evidence is telling us that photo is misleading. So we were trying to get a timeline of what was real for you.
Right.
And, because this isn't real. This is misleading evidence, period, flat, done.
What was real for me is that during the month of May, I was cultivating. I had all of this done. Plants may not have been in the ground by May 10th, but they were small and they were there.
And we accept that part, but we have no evidence of it. So that's why he's asking you about photos. That's what he's making a deal about the photos for?
I understand.
Because we need evidence of that. And we have none.
I don't either, with me.
Okay. Do you have anything further, or do you have anything further you would like to submit before we go to public comment?
I don't know if you'd like this before or after public comment, but I would move for a motion for continuance and allow him to obtain appropriate legal counsel here to address these issues and to gather this evidence that you would like, the photos of the correct time periods. And to figure out the confusion between the two applications because it is very murky as to what he filed, what the attorney filed, what was the attorney's role. There seems to be quite some confusion. Also, these photos...
What two applications?
Well, the two business licenses. These photos, the other thing I wanted to point out, one of them that stated May 21st says, "Planning Department," I believe, Planning.
That's the copy that the planning department has submitted to us.
Right. And so, interesting, okay, and then you have the June 5th from the, with the same hand, similar handwriting, showing the plants in the ground, which would have been consistent with after. So I see your question. And, but as he says, he was cultivating. He points to the places. And that is further evidence that needs to be discovered in order to...
They don't have a satellite photo of May 10th. So really, there's no way to figure this out until I get my own evidence.
Until you obtain your own evidence. And so that's why I would...
That's what we were here today to consider, was all the evidence that you had to support your appeal.
And this is why I contacted the, the staff handling this case yesterday. Anna and Fletcher did too, saying his, his vehicle had been broken into in Texas. His phone was stolen. We weren't sure if he would even be able to get here to testify because his ID was stolen with the wallet from, from his car. So he was able to get a temporary ID yesterday. And we traveled here as soon as he obtained that. So I'm admittedly brought in sort of at the end of this to sort it out. And it sounds to me that, well, he had a lawyer that wasn't a lawyer. And he paid him to represent him. And that's a different case from this. But I know you do have discretion. I'm hoping you'll consider that and at least give him the chance to gather that evidence and understand exactly what the problems are with his application. Because he believes he submitted everything on time and correctly.
Okay.
Everybody signed something that was, had false and misleading evidence in it.
What would that be?
So, the photographs.
The photographs.
He signed an application for registration as a cannabis cultivator. And yes, he, his lawyer or quasi-lawyer might have been messing around. But there's, there's a personal responsibility here. To say that he has complied with everything we've asked is not true.
Oh, I would argue that he made a good faith and child.
So I will, I'm going to interrupt you for just one moment. I apologize.
Sure.
The case before us has proof of misleading evidence. He does not have the licensings that he needed, not just one, but two, because he was notified supposedly. The mailing address is correct, was sent to his home to notify him that he had more work to do with the water board. Even if we continue to this particular case, there is no new evidence that you could bring us that would state he has his seller's permit, he has his business license application that he really filled out and signed. He didn't meet the September dates. The photos are misleading. Even if he brought us true photos, it's still misleading. There isn't, I don't know what new evidence that you could bring us that would fix all of those issues because you can't backdate a seller's permit or a business license.
I have my seller's permit.
You do have it?
It's the water board that you're thinking about.
Water board, pardon me. I'm sorry, I used the wrong terms. But we're still lacking all of those forms, which you can't get. And you cannot get them backdated to September 7th. And we have denied a many cases based on that. Sounds to me more like you've got a civil issue with an outside party. As far as we are concerned here, we have to follow the urgency ordinance. We have seen fraudulent cases. You are not the first one. I don't recognize the name you're referencing. But you are not the first one that was taken advantage of in this industry. It is not a pleasant industry. It is...
I agree.
It is one that people do get taken advantage of. You've seen what's happened in our county over this. It's scary. So, anyway, I don't think that a continuance is going to make a difference for you because we're missing the papers that we needed to be able to move this forward. We can poll the other commissioners just to make sure that there's not three others that would say, I want to give him a chance to go forward. That's just my opinion.
I agree with you.
I'll agree with you. No continuance.
No continuance from my perspective.
We should go ahead today.
Okay. So, we're not going to be granting a continuance. We are now at the end of the time period where you get to finish your presentation. And then we need to go to public comment.
That's what I was going to suggest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I am sorry that you had to go through what you did. I really am.
Well, it is understandable that there was, this was hastily put together. And we plan to fill.
Thank you. Any public comment?
You know, I see this and I just see tragedy.
I do too.
It's just a sad situation. The guy brought his mother. And I got a commendant for that. If when writing this ordinance, you would have put parental permission in there, Peter, we would have had something. But you didn't. You too, both negligent in that.
I'm sorry, are you speaking to this appeal or something else?
Yeah, I'm speaking to the bill. I think that bringing a parent here is a good thing in this bill.
Okay, thank you. So any further public comment? Okay, seeing then, we will be, do you have anything further you need to add on rebuttal?
No, that's... I would like to add something. I passed out earlier a revised resolution. I also provided Mr. Pratt with a copy of that. Couple of changes, wanted to make some corrections. First of all, I want to talk about the, the business license. The practice that most people go through, I think I mentioned this previously, was that they pick up the business license from the tax collector. They take it over to the assessor. The assessor signs off on it. Then they bring it to planning. However, we have accepted, as long as before September 7th, the business application without the assessor's signature on it. So that would have been acceptable. So the, the evidence section in number one of the resolution refers to and reviewed by the county assessor. I think it's twice in the evidence statement that should be stricken if you're intended to use that as part of the evidence for. So I would just strike and reviewed by the county assessor in the first sentence. And then on the next page, about midway down, stamped by the, the assessor's office should also be stricken.
Okay.
The other issue with this is that I believe in previous hearings, the commission has accepted applications for business licenses that they had previously before September 7th, but for one reason or another did not submit to us. I just discovered today that apparently the, he took out, the date on his application was September 6th. I'm assuming that's correct, although apparently it was not signed by him. So it may be moot at this point. But if you feel that he or his agent had made an effort to acquire the business license, just failed to submit it to us in a timely manner, that you have in the past not held that against a registrant. So if you felt that was appropriate here, you could strike finding number one. On finding number two, in the evidence, the very last sentence, the last digit in that was, it says 2016. That was just a typo. That should be 2015. That is the date of the water board requirement when their standards were set.
Where are you?
Very bottom of the evidence on number two, where it says October 2nd, 2016, it should be 2015. I have...
It is 15.
It is 15.
Are you not...
You're talking about three, right?
Oh, no, yeah. I've changed that. I'm going over the old one. So I've changed that to 2015.
Great.
I'm just going over the changes of what were made. I then suggested that we add a finding that there was not sufficient photographic evidence submitted to us of cultivation. Because again, the only, the only pictures we have are photos taken sometime after May 31st. We don't know exactly when. So there was, that's a finding that I've added. And those are the recommended changes to the resolution. That would be numbers, new number three. And then the old number three has become number four.
I note on number four, you need to make the same change you did at three as far as two photographs submitted were dated May 9th, 2016, and whatever it is, June 5th, 2016. two photographs submitted were dated May 9th, 2016, and whatever it is, June 5th, 2016. And also, on finding number two, the, the section numbered, it should be 17 instead of 7.95. Thanks to our legal counsel. May 9th. And June 5th, 2016.
Okay. We've finished going over that, can you read the resolution for us, please?
Recommendation.
Please, that?
Stat recommends to adopt a revised resolution that's in front of you, denying 2016-517, thereby upholding the planning director's denial of 2016.
Thank you. Okay, so, the question is, do you guys still, do you feel that that license is invalidated, even though it was, we have new evidence before us that it's date stamped properly?
Now, I'm unclear now where we are on this. What do you require, what does the Planning Department require with regard to the business license on or before September 7th?
Document submitted to us, from the treasurer task collector, with the appropriate information of who, where, what they were doing.
But if, I think I heard in an earlier item that that, that application is available online, so, did I hear that correctly, or did I...
Yeah, the tax, the business license application is available online.
So, they could just get it online, not take it to the tax assessor, but bring it to you?
Yes.
And as long as, as long as you get a form that appears to be properly filled out, and you receive that by the deadline date, even though it has no indications of any other county office involvement, you've been accepting those?
Yes, we have.
And in this case, what, what did you get, and when did you get it, I sound like the one...
We, we received the document on September 8th, a day late.
But you've told us, and I guess we ruled previously, that if they can show it was actually filled out and submitted before the 7th, just somehow didn't get it to you until a day late, that that's still okay?
I think you ruled on that on the basis of the seller's permit.
No, that's correct.
I don't recall if that same standard was applied to business license.
They lost any logical difference?
Acquisition of the seller's permit.
Yes, we actually, she actually had it, but they didn't submit to us by that deadline.
But it was date stamped, and it's date, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I see a distinction between the two, the seller's permit and the business license for that concept.
I would agree with you.
Yeah, I, I, it's so nebulous with the business license requirement.
I think that the other findings are substantially more important than missed the date with the business license.
Well, yes, but we're eventually going to have a case where that's the only thing...
That, that, well, that could well be.
I would tend, I would tend to strike that, the business license...
Except for...
Finding from this, from this...
Except for, I, I want to just be very clear, that not the appellant state, that's not his signature on the business license application.
So, he did not apply for one at all?
He did not apply for one at all.
That's, that's a particular case, I wouldn't want to say, therefore, we're accepting everything, anything that comes in. If we, if we are, if we are saying that he didn't comply with the business license application, I think we should state a particular finding that it was not his signature.
I'm good with that, because that's obviously, I mean, not, he hired someone to help him along, this person signed things and should not have, I think that finding would be good to document in his paperwork.
So, I think what I'm saying is that if we keep that finding in this case, then we should, under the evidence, have it specifically stated that it was not the applicant's signature on the application.
If we do that, then we need to also include that he did not apply for one, because he did not.
I think we're just muddying the water by keeping one at all, I think it ought to just go away.
That'd be fine with me, because that's...
Way too many issues that we haven't, we don't really know the answer to on this, especially the authority to this John Stevens person. Did he, you know, was he an agent, it sounds like he would, if he was fraudulent, but at that point, he probably had, or maybe he didn't, I don't know. It's just too much mud.
Okay, so, are you recommending removing, what do you want to strike?
One, number one.
Would it be all right if I add to the discussion of the seller's permit and the business license? I think that the main difference between the seller's permit and the business license, especially this one in particular, is that the seller's permit, the date is assigned by the state.
Correct.
The Board of Equalization stamps that date. On this one, the only date we have is a date that the registrant himself filled out, September 6th. So, who's to say that he didn't pick up that business license application September 8th and simply put September 6th? Now, if that application had been stamped by the assessor September 6th, then the same standard should apply as a seller's permit.
I, I agree that we've got two different things with the seller's permit and the business license. Business license application is a little nebulous, but I think for the purposes of this case, that we can do without finding number one, and we don't need to get into the fine points of the business license.
Photographs are pretty clear, and I think that's, as you just said, that's, that's the main, or, Peter, somebody said, that's the main thrust of this thing, that photographs are crazily, just totally wrong.
But I want to be clear, but it's clear that, I would want it to be clear that we're, if we drop finding number one, it's not because we're finding compliance, it's just a question that we need not decide today.
I'm not...
I think that statement puts it clearly on the record.
I'm taking issue with dropping it, because this was part of the hearing. We have evidence and testimony before us here today by the appellant that says, I did not sign that application. I believe that is a major factor in this going forward. His mother has already stated they will be appealing this, and to remove that evidence going forward on an appeal, if it happens, it needs to be documented, that is, that is evidence. Why would you remove evidence?
I agree.
Then I suggest we go back to, if that's the case, that we go back to making sure that in the evidence we submit, we add that the registrant's signature, the signature on the application was not the registrant's signature.
Just add that statement at the end of the finding.
Just add that statement either at the end or before the last sentence.
And otherwise, the evidence would remain as it is?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. Because I do think that this ordinance is very clear about what has to be provided and to whom and when, and it was not done.
Miguel, if I can clarify, on this business license app, the normal procedure would have had other signatures from the task collector, or the assessor, or somebody?
Not necessarily, we have taken them in without the first signature by the assessors.
So, so this is okay, except if there's some, some issue is the possible submission of September 6th date that may not have actually been accurate?
Yeah, I just, I don't believe that the same standards that we have set forth for the seller's permit should apply to the business license application, unless it's already been stamped by the assessors on September 6th, then those same standards would...
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, and I have to agree.
Okay. So, you already read it?
Yes.
We've amended it.
All right, so, I recommend to adopt resolution denying 2016-517, thereby upholding the planning director's denial of 2016-517 as amended.
Thank you. Is there a motion to...
Come on.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries by vote. You want to read the appeal?
This action is final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Okay, and then I have a question for all of you. I had an agenda last quite a time, I believe we have one hearing left.
Yes.
Do you guys want to take a 10-minute break, finish this last hearing and call it a day, or do you want to go for an hour lunch and come back?
Five-minute break is fine.
I'm giving a break. Break?
Thirty seconds.
Okay, all right, well, let's take a, take a break, and we'll come back and finish the last hearing. Call it a day.
Yeah.
Are you kidding me?
He's my buddy, you're like this. He's my buddy, you're like this.
Just not by him, you're lying to me.
No, it's, yeah, you pass it around.
When do you start doing a movie?
Well, Joe ate one first, so, if he starts choking, then we'll know. Oh. He's looking awful, Brad, I don't know.
Okay. All right, we're ready to call the meeting back to order, and we're going to go to our last hearing of the day, 2016-717, and Miguel, we'll let you take it from here.
This is Miguel, concerns with the Calibers County Planning Department, I'm here to present appeal 2016-717. I'm sorry, this is for James Henderson.
Do you need lunch?
Hanson, what was that?
Do you need lunch?
I'm sorry. All right, so, real quick, the project location is located at, it actually doesn't have an address, but it is located across this, across Highway 12, from 622 Highway 12, Valley Springs. That's around that little nursery that's past Toyon, going towards Valley Springs. It's on the other side of the street. So, essentially, the main complaint with, or the only complaint with this, this registration, is that failure to submit a complete application with, or failure to comply with water board requirements as per 17.95.165. and .4, specifically Point B. So, Mr. Henderson, or Hanson, I'm sorry, I keep saying Henderson, Mr. Hanson, applied with the county on June 26th, and with his application, he submitted a photo of a NOI that he had submitted or would submit to the water board. After September 7th, with communications with the water board, staff was informed that the water board never received an application for Mr. Hanson, neither an application nor payment for his NOI. In his appeal, Mr. Hanson submitted a photo, a date-stamped photo of a envelope addressed to the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board at their writing office, as well as a date-stamped photograph showing the first page of an NOI, how he filled out NOI, as well as a check, a personal check, signed and dated 6/14/2016. And so, once more, the water board never received any documentation from Mr. Hanson for them to register him and come into compliance with County Code 17.95.165. and .4. And that's all I have to say about it.
Okay, is the appellant here? Okay, come on up.
Hi.
Good afternoon, my name's James Hanson, I'm the CEO of Dank City Collective.
Okay, great. Anything further that you want to add to this? Did you apply, do you have a letter of intent and cash check?
Yes, so, just like this gentleman stated from the Planning Department, the only evidence that I have, that I did send out a letter to the water board with the contents of the NOI and the check there, they didn't receive it. I never got any notice that they didn't. It said in the application, you could submit that paperwork three different ways, either bringing it in physically to the office, signing online, or mailing it. Luckily, I took those photographs, because that's the only proof that I have that I did mail it out. You know, I guess I could have got it registered, but that wasn't a required mailing method. So, I believe that, you know, since they didn't receive it, I did try to, and, you know, unfortunately, things do get lost in the mail, and I think that's, you know, unfair for grounds for dismissal. If I did try to submit the paperwork, made the attempt within the timeframe, they never received it, and, you know, I thought it was all, all taken care of, I didn't hear otherwise until the Planning Department contacted me in March, letting me know that the water board never received the paperwork that I tried to, so...
The water board, the water board, the onus is not on the water board to tell you that they didn't receive it, because they wouldn't even know that you'd sent it, right?
Right, right, I understand that, I understand that.
Did you check your check, Nick, go ahead.
Did the check ever get cashed?
It never got cashed, no, I, I believe it never made it there, because...
This is unfortunately not proof that you mailed it, this is a picture that you wrote the envelope, and that you filled out the thing, and you wrote a check, it's not proof that you mailed it. Proof that you mailed it would have been, I'm sorry. Proof that you mailed it would have been certified from the post office or something, this is not proof. This is just a picture that you filled it all out.
Mm-hmm, well, I mean, I wouldn't have taken a picture of it and just forgot to put it in the mailbox. I mean, it didn't say in the application that it had to be a certified mail, it just said by mail.
I understand that, but you just said that this is proof that you did it, this is not proof that you did it, it's proof that you took a picture of it.
Right, so what would I have to do, take a picture of it in my mailbox with the flag up?
Or send it certified, where you get a receipt from the mailbox or the post office. There's no proof, you don't have bank statements that the check was cashed, you said that you don't think the check was ever cashed. So, there's technically nothing saying that you actually did it.
I mean, I would have got it certified if it would have stated in the application that you have to send it out certified mail. It didn't state that, so, the only other evidence that I have is proving the letter and the contents in the letter. If it would have stated in the application that I had to submit it certified mail, then I...
I'm not saying that you have to submit it certified, I'm saying that in order for you to have proof that you did something, it would have been good if you sent it certified. If you're not, if you're choosing not to do it online, and you're choosing not to take it in yourself, if you would have sent it certified... it in yourself, if you would have said it certified, you would have known a long time ago that they never received it because you would have never got your receipt back from the post. I mean, you would have received a receipt from the post office.
I under, I understand that, what you're saying, but, you know, with it not being a requirement that you have to get it certified, these photographs should prove to you guys that I did make the attempt in mailing it.
It's certainly a clear indication that you, you took steps.
Yeah, there's no way I would have took these photographs.
One of the main problems I have with this is that between June and September, your check was not cashed. And so, we won't, we don't have any indication that your, that a complete application was actually received by the Water Quality Control Board. And the question of whether or not you mailed it, again, you could have had much better proof that you mailed it.
Did you mail it off around the middle of June?
Yeah, I mailed it off on that date.
Okay, now, do you get a bank statement every month?
I do, but, I mean, to be honest with you guys, during the season, it's so hectic. I mean, I didn't even check my bank statements until honestly when they notified me that this issue had came up. As growers, you know, you spend your time in the field, you know, I don't have access to a computer. It's very rural out there. So, you know, I wasn't, I was so busy that I didn't really have time to, you know, monitor my bank statements with most of my time being dedicated in the field and with no internet access. I was kind of just relying on, you know, me getting the permit and having these photographs as, you know, I've satisfied everything that I can do to submit a proper application. So, yeah, I could have been on top of the bank statements. You're totally correct in that. Unfortunately, the circumstances and with the growing season didn't allow me, you know, full access to internet Wi-Fi to monitor that.
In February of this year, you heard from the planning staff, I believe it was February twenty-seventh, telling you that this hadn't happened. And according to the report from staff, it says you then told them that you would, that you had not submitted payment and that you would do so immediately. Do you remember that conversation?
Yeah, I believe we had the conversation and, you know, it was in the morning, you know, I was just waking up and she threw all this information at me. She was asking me stuff that I submitted like ten months previous or nine months previous. So I didn't recall. I said, let me look through my notes and, you know, I had half my notes at the farm, half my notes there. I hadn't looked at it.
Well, did you call the water board at that point?
Yeah, absolutely. That's when I started calling the water board and asking them if they received it, if they had any proof that they received it, or maybe it made it to their office, they just hadn't gotten to it yet. I mean, I made several contacts to the water board and they notified me that they didn't. And that's when, that's when this whole, whole thing came about. And then I did go back and review my notes. I had to go back up to the farm. They, they were gracious, or they were gracious enough to allow me a couple of weeks to do that. And after digging through my paperwork that I had filed back in June, I found the evidence. And this is when I submitted it to you guys.
And you did not try to cover that check with another check? Or even submit the application late?
Honestly, when I put it in the mail, sir, I thought it was taken care of. I mean, I had no other, you know, prior knowledge to how this process works. You know, with me mailing the letter off with the check and the paperwork, I thought everything was good. I had gotten my permit. So I thought everything was taken care of. I was unaware that they didn't receive it with the letter that I had mailed off. I just provided the character letter just, you know, to show that I'm an honest person, you know, I'm trying to comply with all the laws, you know, how this industry is changing and.
We're not pointing fingers, we're simply required to follow the black and white letter of the law.
Right, absolutely. I was just trying to comply with the, with the ordinance, with these photographs. And one of the methods of submission was a letter. And this is how I showed proof of me mailing the letter.
Okay. Can we just make sure there's no public comment on this one? There's only one person behind you.
I guess this is it. I was wondering why I could hear an echo in my voice. I'm like, this place must be pretty empty.
Okay. All right. Being that there's no public comment, do you have any further evidence you want to provide to us?
Um, no, not other than what's provided. I mean.
It's a very nice letter that your landlord wrote, by the way.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Do you have any further?
I just wanted to add that there were a few avenues. They were not required, but there were a few avenues to verify that the water board did receive their NOI. Many other applicants contacted the water board and asked early June, August, July, whether or not they received it. They asked for receipt, they asked, yeah, at least a email saying, hey, yeah, we received your, your application. Many registrants brought us checks that have been cashed or, you know, bank statements that show that the money was deducted. So there were a few avenues had the applicant, you know, chosen to go ahead and, and go, go through those processes, this could have been avoided in that sense.
I have a question. Was a copy of the envelope and a copy of the check submitted with the original registration?
No.
What, so the only thing that came with the original registration was a copy of the NOI?
A photo, or a picture of the front page of the NOI.
Okay, and so the planning department didn't receive anything else until, from the applicant on this, until this appeal. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no further comment, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I do have another question from the planning department. Because the, the ordinance says that the, the planning department has to get document or evidence satisfactory to them that the NOI was filed on time. So is it still the position of the planning department that it has not been provided document or evidence satisfactory to them of submittal by the applicant of a complete application to the water board and receipt by the water board of that application?
That's our determination.
And that still stands?
Yes.
I have a question for you. You submitted these photos, they appear to be date stamped June fourteenth. Where'd you get those?
Those are from my partner's camera.
Okay. So it would have been nice to have your partner here to be able to kind of document that.
Yeah. He's my partner, but he's not, he's not on the Board of Supervisors on my collective, so.
And did you lose your phone? Is that what you said?
No.
No, that gentleman before him.
Starting to run together now. Sorry. At least I asked. Okay, so he took those photos back in June?
Yes.
Do you have hard copies of all these documents at your house? Or did you just take photos with a phone?
No, these were, these were off of a camera.
Did you take photos of everything you were submitting?
Yeah, I have, I mean, in my application, we have other photos with date stamps. So, yeah, we have, I don't, I don't think I brought those with me because I didn't, they didn't have an issue with that. This is the only issue that was raised with my.
I guess for me is if I looked at your camera and I could see you took pictures on June tenth and the registration papers on June fourteenth, and then July, you had a whole bunch of things going on in your life, it would have showed some history of this happening, but I don't have any proof when this photo was taken necessarily. I don't, you know what I'm saying?
I don't, the photo was taken on the date stamp.
One of those documents, the photograph, was included in the application package. Is that correct, Miguel?
Yes, the, a photograph of the front page of the NOI.
So we did have that by June thirtieth?
It's not date stamped, though.
No, that's not a photograph. That was just a scan, a turbo scan of the, I believe I actually submitted the original copy in my original.
Okay, you have a copy of that. Do you have the signature page with the date on that? Because what we have doesn't have a signature and date.
Signature is on June fourteen two thousand sixteen.
And that was submitted before June thirtieth?
Yes.
And that's just the copy of the, the application, not, not the copy of the, of the envelope and check?
No, not the.
We only get that with the denial of the appeal.
Correct.
Does the application that you're looking at match the photo?
I honestly couldn't tell you. I mean, it has the same information and.
On the checkbox, as you said, that's interesting, okay.
How, I mean, he has a copy of that form.
Yeah, I understand.
I believe I just filled out one form and then I have a photocopy of it. Because I had to submit the originals to you guys and I, I had to keep the photocopies for myself. But I didn't fill out two of those forms. It's all the same form.
But you submitted a copy of it.
Oh, is that a copy? Okay. I think I have the originals at my, I believe I have the originals, or those are the originals and I have photocopies, but it's, I didn't fill out two of those forms. It was just one form, you know, photocopied.
So you have the originals at your house? Is that what you said?
You didn't mail them to Reading?
I believe I emailed, or I mailed them a photocopy. I believe I submitted the originals to you guys because you guys required to have wet ink. So all the originals were submitted to you guys and then I kept a photocopy, several photocopies of the same original.
What would have went, or what would have went to Reading then? A copy?
I, I honestly can't call if it was one of the originals or the copies, but it's all the same. You know, you could, you could look at the photograph and compare it to that. It's the same signature, same spot on the ink. I mean, I'm not trying to forge any documents here.
What we have is a copy. We don't have the original NOI.
You don't have an original signature?
We don't have an original notice of intent application, so.
But if he had an original signature, especially if he used blue ink, which he probably didn't.
And we.
I don't know, the application that I submitted to them, it was good for a permit to give to me, so I must have followed the rules correctly when I got the permit.
We required wet ink for indemnification agreements.
That's right.
And our actual registration form and landowner consent forms, not for third-party stuff like this. Photocopy was fine.
We typically got a copy of the NOI because the original would normally be filed with that date.
So that at least corroborates his claim that he sent in the NOI.
Well, we have a copy of the cover page of the application, the NOI.
Regardless, it's all the same. You could, you could compare the photographs and the copy that I submitted to you guys. It's the exact same signature, the exact same ink.
I would confirm that. It does appear to be the same, same document this copy of.
However, it doesn't really corroborate that he sent it in because if he, he gave us a copy, if he had his original at home, he could have taken a picture of it last week. I mean, and it would, it would still appear the same as the copy that we have.
It corroborates it. It doesn't, it's not final. It's just one piece of evidence that supports his claim. That's all I'm saying.
Do we have any information that shows that to this date, the water board has received a complete application, including a check?
We have no information like that.
Well, the water board put in writing that he can still submit his NOI, but that it would not comply with Calaveras County. So at this point, why would he send the twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yeah, they, they notified me. I, I could submit it, but they need to have your guys' approval first before they can accept any payment and application, so.
Well, they still have to comply with the state as well, the water board. So that's why you're going to have to pay.
Eventually, yes, but it was, I think they were doing you a favor.
Yeah, exactly. They said that you could pay the twenty-five hundred, but if you don't get granted your appeal, you're not going to get that money back. So that's why I'm waiting to do so. Hopefully that I'll get approval and then, I mean, I'll submit it tomorrow if you guys approve me.
The issue that we have with approving you, I'm just going to be honest with you, is that I don't know that there's enough evidence before us to be able to say we can approve. And what happens is if we go, oh, man, I feel sorry for this guy. I think he's being honest, the day is long, and then the next person is, isn't an honest person, but then they bring their attorney and they say, hey, you approved him. It puts us in a position.
Do they have the same photographic evidence that I do?
Assuming that they did.
Assuming.
That, you know, and, and we believe that they took it last week.
It just puts us in a position of not following the ordinance and then it puts us in a position of liability. That's, that's what our responsibility is, is trying to keep the county complying with the ordinance and not getting ourselves in trouble later down the road with the next appellant. We, we try to rule consistent and the only way we can do that is by ruling on the ordinance itself and how it's written.
How, how could I further prove that I, I did one of the methods that they accept in sending the letter? It didn't say it had to be certified. So I believe I went above and beyond and had photographic evidence of the letter. How else do you want me to prove that I sent a letter? I mean, mistakes happen in the mail. I'm sure everybody here has ordered something from Amazon or somewhere where it didn't show up. That's obviously what happened here.
I agree, mistakes happen in the mail.
I don't believe I should.
Part of the ordinance says that you have to do this and it didn't get completed.
Right. How would I know that it didn't get completed with no?
You would have done what other people did. They didn't trust the mail. They didn't trust government agencies. They called, they followed up, they actually put the phones in the planning department off the hook to make sure that every deadline was getting met. You've got it, you've got it, you've got it, you've got it. I mean, I've tried calling the planning department, can't get through because it's, goes to the answering machine.
Right.
So I know they're overwhelmed with people, especially in that September timeframe, verifying they've met every spot in the ordinance. That's what a lot of them did. They've testified here before as, well, I called them and, and verified and I spoke to so-and-so on such and such date and this time. It was a record of documentation. So I'm not saying you did anything wrong. I'm just saying that that's how you would have been able to prove it.
In hindsight, I wish I would have too, you know? I mean, always in hindsight, it's like.
Yeah, we all know hindsight well.
But with them giving me the permit at the time when I submitted the application, I mean, literally, I had my attorney write it up and.
So we've had other.
They flipped through it and didn't have any.
Just to give you an example, we had another appellant last year that had that paperwork and they said, well, I, I had it all ready to go, I just didn't have the money. I just couldn't come up with the twenty-five hundred bucks. So we don't know if that's, you know what I mean? It's like, I mean, he sat here and said, I could have done it, I couldn't do it because I didn't have the money, but I had the application all filled out, I had the check written. So that is, you know, I mean, that's one of those things. And it was getting towards the end of the year where times were getting tough for the cultivators and running out of money, needing to get that crop out of the ground. So we don't know the check was ever mailed. We don't know because we don't have a council check, we didn't have follow-up phone calls to confirm. That's the position that we're put in.
I understand that, but, you know, with, with that being a method, I mean, with so much gray areas with the mailing method, they should probably take that out of the consideration of one of the methods that are approved because certain situations like this can come up. I don't feel like I should, you know, take the hit on that and get denied on something that is. I don't feel like I should, you know, take the hit on that and get denied on, on something that is a mailing, uh, issue, you know?
Under, under an appeal, the burden of proof is on you, and...
And that's my proof.
And, but it's not, it's just a picture, and...
So are you guys just saying you don't believe me that I put it in the mailbox?
No, no. We're saying, in order for us to rule otherwise, we have to have really good proof, like a registry, a, a documented receipt that you mailed.
It doesn't require that.
No, we didn't, it, it, the responsibility, but...
It doesn't say you need to have it registered?
Yes, it does, black and white, sub endpoint four, last part of it, and provides a copy of a document indicating receipt by the Water Quality Control Board. So, yeah, carried in there admittedly, maybe it's fine print, it's probably one of 10,000 words in this thing. Very hard to find it, but it does require the receipt.
How would I get the receipt if I sent it in the mail and I'm waiting on a response from them to get a receipt?
You'd call them up.
You'd call them.
Call them.
Sorry, and I am sorry, it's just one of those requirements, and that's what we're here to...
I just feel like that's really unfair, you know, especially like not, not giving any of these growers the opportunity to make a correction, okay? That, you, you guys are the first county in California to come out with an urgent ordinance, you know? With, with that being said, you know, I can understand that, you know, all the fine lines and gray areas aren't sorted out, you know? I've heard a couple appeals that had a lot of gray areas. Um, but, you know, with that being said, you know, not giving the growers the opportunity to even make a correction, I feel is very unfair, you know, I mean, I worked really hard, this is how I put food on the table for my family. You know, I have over 400 patients now that depend on me for medicine, you know, um, I, I believe I'm, you know, meeting all the requirements in the industry to stay current and up to date, and I pride myself on that. And a simple technicality like this, and not given the chance to make the correction, I feel is, you know, extremely unfair in your guys' process. And, you know, like, for example, in, uh, Sonoma, they, they came out with a permanent ordinance just on March 7th, and, um, very similar to you guys' ordinance, they give a three-strike rule, you know? If some, if there's a discrepancy in the paperwork, or dates aren't met, there's fines that occur.
Unfortunately, that is not in our ordinance.
Right, but I'm just saying, as an example, that's like the first permanent ordinance in California that has been adopted. That's what you guys were working towards, and I feel like, you know, you guys should consider doing that and giving growers... It's like, you know, you get a speeding ticket, you got one speeding ticket, are they going to revoke your license? Not let you go to work, or are you going to go to court?
Actually, I can speak to that. I hold a state of California license, and if I don't do my continuing education, if I don't complete my education, I don't turn in my certificates, I don't pay my fees, my license is wiped out.
Absolutely, but on the first...
Instantly, there is no recovery date, I have a deadline, pardon me?
If you get a speeding ticket, is your license revoked right away? No, you have the opportunity to pay for it, go to traffic school, I believe the same principle should apply here.
Okay, the problem with applying the same principle here is, this is different. This is an urgency ordinance in our county, it had dates, it had timelines, and those...
And I tried to meet those dates.
I understand you did, nobody here is saying that you didn't. But we, the burden of proof on, is on the appellant, we don't have the proof we need before us. We have the responsibility going forward with other appellants to follow the urgency ordinance. We're not, we're not, we're not saying you're a bad guy, that's not how any of us, I don't think, feel up here. We have set here...
I feel like this is a real small issue that can usually correct it.
Okay, but you, let me tell you something, we didn't write the ordinance, we're not the final say-so in all of this, the supervisors are. You will receive the opportunity to appeal to the supervisors, they're the ones that have the most authority, not us. We have to follow the letter of the law here, you can appeal to them.
I feel like I have followed the letter of the law.
Well, I think, I think, uh, Commissioner Bocelli pointed out that one of the provisions of the law is that you provide a copy to the Planning Department of a document indicating receipt by the Water Quality Control Board to the Planning Department. Now, that's one requirement you didn't meet, and I think you have very good arguments for fairness, that, that, I mean, Sonoma County has obviously considered this sort of situation.
Yeah, they give these three opportunities.
When they came, when they came out...
You guys don't allow any opportunities, it's like, hey, you, you tried one, you're out.
But the problem is, here, we have to apply the statute the way it exists, the ordinance the way it exists. That's, I mean, we, we're under, that's our duty.
I believe I have followed that, you know, I believe so, you know, I don't know, it doesn't say you have to do it certified mail, you guys keep going back to that?
We have to have a time...
No, I'm going, I'm going back to the fact that you didn't provide a, a cop...
The only, the only time you could get a receipt is if you submit it online, or if you go in there. If you do a letter, how are you going to get a receipt without them receiving it first?
But past that, there is another requirement that you provide the Planning Department with...
I would've provided it with them if this, this letter would've been received.
Okay, I, I will, I, I can just stop if you'll stop. This is another requirement, it's a requirement that you provide the Planning Department with proof of receipt by the Water Quality Control Board. That wasn't done here, because apparently they never got it. Where you need to make your arguments is, to the Board of Supervisors, if they are going to come up with a permanent ordinance, other than just a ban, they need to hear from people like yourself that it needs to have more elements of more chances.
It needs to be revised, it needs to be revised, so that there's no gray areas.
Yeah, we can't...
They can do that, maybe I need to appeal it to them, but I figured you guys would be, you know, gracious enough to save me the time and effort and money, and, on both parties, you know?
We have to apply the ordinance the way they've written it.
Okay.
We may not like it, but that's...
Have you guys ever granted an appeal?
Yes.
Yeah, you guys have? I just feel like, you know, it's like, you guys are so quick to, you know, make, follow the ordinance, you know?
Okay, so I'm going to, we're not presenting any new evidence, we're kind of just getting into little bickering modes here, and we don't want to do that, we want to keep it clean, and, um, we, um, will need to bring it back to the Commission to enclose the hearing and have discussion on the resolution. Uh, Miguel, can you read the...
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2017 dash 034, thus denying 2016, 2016 dash 717, thereby upholding the Planning Director's denial of 2016 da, uh, dash 717.
Thank you.
I do have some issues with the resolution.
Okay.
Under paragraph one, there's a typo, it should be, the citation to the ordinance should be 17.95.165 and 4. And then the evidence underneath that, um, the second sentence. The appellant submitted photos dated June 14th, 2016, of a filled-out NOI, as well as a check written out to the CBRWQCB. Then it goes on to say, however, there is no clear evidence, I think the word clear should be satisfactory, because that's the language of the ordinance. That shows the appellant actually filed with the Water Board pursuant to 1795.165 NB. And I would add the following. And the applicant has not provided any documentation to the Planning Department indicating receipt by the Water Board of a complete application.
And that, uh, on the, on the same evidence paragraph, I'm sorry, are you, are you done?
Yes.
Sorry. I would start that evidence paragraph with, on March 2nd, 2017, comma, and then continue with the Central Appellate Regional Quality Control Board. Um, and the word "they" should be "it," I think, on that, on the second line. And if we're really getting persnickety by, the comma after the CBRWQCB should be a semicolon. Can I add one thing to the...
Madam Chair, may the record reflect that I found a typo that Kelly Booster did not find.[1503.52][1503.52](laughing).
I'm sorry, you have to understand that Kelly is very good with his grammar.
I seen him all today, he was making good corrections.
Yeah, and, and so, I don't even try to go there, I let them do it, I'm smarter than them.[1518.24][1518.24](laughing). I let them do the hard work. Okay, go ahead.
Item number one, seventh line down, number R5 dash 2015, missing the number five.
Did I have a comment before the decision?
Okay, well, the hearing's closed, so technically I'm not supposed to allow any further comment, I'm so sorry.
Well, maybe a comment that doesn't, that won't affect your guys' decision?
Two seconds, go.
Okay, uh, maybe it could've been a little misleading for them approving my license without seeing the state dam, misleading me in thinking that my application was complete, but they get, granted me a permit that, I guess, was incomplete, you know, having me believe that everything was in submission, and that's...
Okay, that was 20 seconds.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're fired.[1588.80][1588.88](laughing).
I'm trying my best here.
I understand what you're doing, I get it, I get it, but I gave you an opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's, um, if we've got all the corrections done, we will need to get a motion?
Oh, yeah, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oops, amended, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, Peter, pay attention here, listen, wait, 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 listen.
Final, that's appealed within 15 calendar days to the Board of Supervisors.
Is that, do I pay another 500 bucks?
Yes.
Oh, and then submit it to the Planning Board?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, can I email it?
How would you email a check?
You know what, you want a receipt that you filed during appeal, right? Learned lesson, receipt, 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 document, document, document.
Mr. Hanson, I, I just want to, when I say that it's a matter for the Board of Supervisors to, you know, put in the fairness parts, so... Here they will be interpreting the ordinance as was written last year. When they consider a new ordinance, they might think about putting new things in, I just didn't want to get you unclear on that. Okay?
Thank you. That's what I want to know, okay? Really?[1681.60][1681.60](laughing). Okay, oh, I guess I need to wrap up the meeting, I apologize. Um, thank you for today, is there any public comment? Okay, let's go to lunch, it's 1:00, meeting adjourned.
Uh, one thing I'd like to, sorry, 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 sorry.
Oh, wait, we got other things to do here, I forgot.
Just to let you know, I expect to have, um, the final draft, not final draft, the final, uh, version of the draft DIR and the canvas ordinance, when I get back to my desk. Uh, we will be posting it, um, on our website today or tomorrow. Um, and, uh, the official comment period will begin on Monday, May 1st.
And that's a 45-day...
Forty-five day comment period.
Thank you very much.
So, um, do you, I can, um, do you... I don't know if it's going to be too big to email, but we'll figure out a way to get electronic copies to you, does anyone want a hard copy?
I do.
I do.
But I could pick it up, if it's...
Will you deliver them to all of us?
Okay, so, I hear four, four hard copies?
I'll take one.
Five hard copies, well, you're going to get one anyway, so, okay. Each of the Commissioners would like a hard copy.
I will pick my...
I will let you know when we have them printed and ready to go.
Okay, if you let us know, either I can pick it up, or have somebody else. Okay, and is there anything that the Commissioners would like to report out on?
I'd just like to make sure that Miguel's approach to the business license, uh, application made a lot of sense to me. And I'm, when we get into the future and you say, you guys have done this, or you guys have done that, I appreciate that approach being kept along.
Yes, definitely.
And thank you, Miguel, for making sense of this.
All right, any further comments?
No, I'm...
Okay, now, now it's 1:03, and the meeting can be adjourned.